We on live, Miles?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bath Planning Commission meeting. It's November the 14th, 6 o'clock, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Is there approval of the agenda?
Slow move. Second.
Approved and seconded. Can I get a consensus vote? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Thank you, gentlemen. Any disclosures of a conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none. General public comments. If there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment about anything, whether it's on the agenda or not, doesn't matter, you're welcome to make a comment to the Planning Commission. Go ahead.
My name is Joan Matson, and I live at 15344 Club Course Drive in Hawk Hollow. Because you're going to have a big discussion later in the meeting, and my husband and I may have to leave during that discussion because we have another commitment tonight, I wanted to ask some questions up front that are just, you may answer during your discussion, but I won't know, so I have to ask them early. One of the things that I always wanted to look at was this site plan in the context of the rest of the surrounding properties. And when I looked through the materials that were online, I kept seeing the site plan, but never the adjacent properties. Kind of a direction to Webster Road and direction to Drumholler Road, but it gives me a problem of perspective to not know from the freeway to the, this complex, how big this is compared to other potential work in the future. That brings me to my second question, and that is, did the Planning Commission ever have, back in the DDA discussions, an actual plan for that corridor from the freeway to, say, the four corners? I know you were planning lights along Webster Road, which said to me that you must have had a concept about what was going to happen along there. But I don't remember if there was ever a plan specifically of what we wanted to see as a city in that corridor. So with this site, would that impact what you were dreaming of as this city beautiful in the future, or a city economic, whatever the plans might have been? And I probably had several others, but those were the two, just to place everything in context for me would be helpful. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Any questions? Or, well, the comments, we're not here to have a dialogue.
You know, I'll say something now. My name's Tim Fair. I live at 15469 Wood Road, Lansing, DeWitt Township. You know, I'm here for a couple reasons. Number one, I'm on the Planning Commission of DeWitt Township, have been for 15-plus years. I happen to be the chair this time around. We had a three-hour meeting, we could go last Monday, so it was a tough meeting, because we were weighing some tough decisions. You guys are doing the same tonight. I'm also here tonight as the Director of Clinton County Catalyst. Clinton County Catalyst is the economic development group within Clinton County. It's been around for 20-plus years, was started by our Board of Commissioners up in St. John's. You guys are going to make a tough decision tonight. This is going to change the face of Bath Township. It is. And you have to make a decision. Do you want to see that face change? When Darrell Kessler created Hawk Hollow and the entire neighborhoods over there, it changed the face of DeWitt Township, or Bath Township. When he created Eagle Eye, it changed the face of Bath Township. When the 425 agreement went in with DeWitt Township, between DeWitt Township and Bath Township, it changed the face of Bath Township. There's been a lot of changes in both of our communities, but I would encourage you. I was here the last month, and there was a nice school teacher that spoke. One of the things that she said was, this is really going to open the door for the community. Miles, in my opinion, your planner, has done a fantastic job of working together to help develop Bath Township. And it's been slow to develop over the years. Steve Wiswasser would tell you that, Jack Phillips would tell you that, lots of people would tell you that. And they're good people. Certainly Bob Zieve, and those guys would tell you that. But it's good development, and I think this is a good move for your community. Will it rock some people's worlds? It will. Will it disrupt certain things? It will. But so did Hawk Hollow. So did Eagle Eye. And they've bettered Bath Township. So I'd encourage you to vote for this development tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the Planning Commission? Okay, we'll move on. Gentlemen, have you read the minutes? And is there any changes or additions or corrections?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as written.
Moved by Bray Cockey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Can I get a consensus vote? Or, those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Anybody object? Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Miles, communications.
Yeah, there's nothing in the package tonight, but I did email out to the Planning Commission communication from our legal counsel about the preemption of local control over some of that green infrastructure legislation from the state, so check that out. Our legal counsel is providing a class about it tomorrow at noon, kind of a last-minute thing they put together just to let us know how to handle these as they come up now. If anyone in the Planning Commission would like to join that, just let me know. We'll be at the conference room at noon.
Okay. Didn't know you were having one.
Yeah, they just put it out today, so.
Can I ask a question here? Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. How long do you expect that meeting to last?
It'll probably need 45 minutes. The class runs 45, 15 minutes for questions.
Okay.
Is everybody aware of what the controversy is here? Why don't you fill them in, Miles?
The controversy, I guess, if you're not aware, we're in the audience, recently the state of Michigan has taken up some legislation that would preempt local control, so that's, this meeting tonight is a meeting that's about local control. The state sought to preempt that when it comes to larger utility-scale infrastructure projects for solar and wind. So that's kind of a big deal in the state of Michigan, highly controversial, so. By all indications, it looks like the governor will sign or has signed, and it's going through.
Okay, thank you. Old business. Project Forge. Gentlemen, there's a lot of people here that I'm sure would like to participate in a discussion about this. Is there any objection to opening the meeting to a meeting of the whole? If I hear no objections, I'm going to open the meeting.
You're going to have Miles open it up?
Miles, you want to open the meeting in the whole, and then make your comments, please?
Yeah, I can make my comments before and then it's...
Well, that's fine. Yeah, that's great.
Okay, I'll do it.
That's great. Make your comments, and then we'll be open the meeting.
Okay. So just quickly go over, because I know there are a lot of people here, and I just want to say, I guess, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I think it's really big for everyone to be here. As was stated, this is a big impact on the community, and I guess personally, I do appreciate the people that are going to be impacted or be present for this process. So, just to get down to the nuts and bolts of it here, this project is seeking to develop on a parcel that's within the de-development district. This is approved land use, a bi-special use permit. It's a land use that conforms with the currently adopted comprehensive plan by this community, which is kind of, for the planning department and planners across the state, the comprehensive plan is always kind of our more star when it comes to reviewing developments. So it being in conformity with that plan, at least for me, is, I guess, the biggest factor that leads to all of our determinations. It also is in line with the future land use of plan for this parcel, which is commercial slash industrial land uses. We've been over the metrics of this site before, but just to reiterate some of that, roughly speaking, this is about 365,000 square foot facility that's being proposed on a 19.33 acre site. The footprint of the proposed parking will be about 198,000 square feet. So, the larger development, it was mentioned during public comment, and I know I've struggled with it personally. Scale is hard to perceive with the development of this size. So I'll go to the site plan real quick. One thing that helped me perceive scale personally while I was doing my review is these existing structures here. This is the barn and the single-family home that exists currently on this larger parent parcel, and that kind of brings into perspective how large this building is. Even when me and the fire marshal were viewing the turning radiuses for some of the fire trucks and fire lanes, it almost looks like the lanes themselves are fairly tight unless you look at the measurement, which says it's 30 feet wide and then 60 feet wide here. It's all because scale is totally off. There was, to the concern about the overall site picture, there, on the last sheet of the site plans, there was kind of a zoomed-out picture. Of course, it doesn't include the proof bank, which I agree would have been helpful here, but at least this does give you some perception of how it sits within the site. We have a pretty built-out set of conditions on this one, so if anyone took the time to look at the proposed conditions in the staff report, just because of the scale of this, we want to make sure we had the tools in our toolbox, not only for myself, but for SCUMA, the Draining Commission, the Township Engineer, and all of our other partnering agencies to be able to get the requirements and the standards that we'd like to see on this site as a part of the construction plan review, which for people that don't know, currently we're in the zoning and land use phase of review. That's where it goes through these public bodies, such as the Planning Commission and the Township Board. Following that phase of review, when you're into the construction phase, that's where we're in administrative phase. That's where the developer works with our building department and staff to just make sure this all goes through and is built to the standards of those different agencies. The conditions we place on that site that are familiar with this process allows us to have the tools and the rules in place to allow those agencies to exert their authority to enforce those standards. So let me get to the conditions. There's one condition that we would like to remove from this list because of some developments that happened Thursday, Friday, and Monday between myself, the Township Engineer, and the Fire Marshal. That's the condition. It's kind of last page of the staff report, towards the top. A single access road slash drive shall be constructed to Drumholler Road as a part of overall site. Originally, that condition was put in because we were under the impression that there may be a requirement for manhole covers, and we wanted access to those manhole covers as part of the sewer installation there, and/or water and light might need that road to get to their infrastructure. It appears that those manhole covers and water and light access would not be required here, so we did check with the Fire Marshal to make sure everything can be safely done from the Fire Marshal standards in terms of life, health, and safety. We did a review today comparing this to the Myers facility, and he provided the agency review saying that this facility can operate in a safe manner compared to our most comparable facility, Myers, because it operates the same way, one egress in and out, but they're able to serve the building from all sides, so that gives them access to every side of the building, as well as this entire building is going to be sprinkled. So it made them feel more than safe that they'd be able to handle any situation here. So we didn't feel like legally we have the ability to enforce that condition. It'd be similar, just to give context to the Planning, we should be similar of like asking a developer to retrofit one of our parks. We'd be holding them to account for something off-site that's unrelated to them. That's not common practice in the planning industry. Now, for something like the sewer easements, the drainage easements, we feel confident that we can place those conditions in because they are directly affected by things happening on the site and directly related to the site. So legally speaking, those are all in play here. But if we don't have good reasoning, which I, at this point, don't think we do for the drive, I would feel like we'd be putting ourselves in a bad legal situation by trying to request that as a condition. So my suggestion is to remove that one. All the other conditions are in play, and I would recommend that those become part of the overall. I guess that's my, you know, synopsis of the staff report.
That's everything you want to talk about?
Yeah, there's a number of concerns on the site still, but hopefully those will be able to be addressed as a part of the construction review phase, if we get to that point. Just to highlight some of those concerns, I guess, there's retaining walls that our Township Engineer and other agencies will have to review as a part of that, but we have a condition for that. We want to ensure that there's proper stacking for trucking. That's something we'll work with the Row Commission on, the condition for that. The snow concerns have been addressed. We got a new sheet, which I've actually printed out and is available on that smaller board there. But basically, they were able to show that snowdrifts will be able to be managed, and snow allotment areas will be able to be placed, and snow can be piled in a way that won't obstruct parking or drives. The road we've addressed. And the last point is, and Cap's, their engineering, the developments engineering firm feels confident that they'll be able to address in the construction plan, we just wanted some redundancies placed in for drainage along this half of the parking lot slash drive area. There, I think, I hope I don't misstate anything here, and Kevin can speak to this more if you guys have any questions. Kevin Greider is the Township Engineer who's present tonight. There was only one outlet for surface water drainage. We felt like if that outlet got plugged, that might put this development in a bad spot for parking lot overflow. It was a suggestion of the Township Engineer to build a redundancy into that system. Cap's agrees. It's all they assured us that they'd be able to take care of that. So those were some of the high-level concerns that we identified.
I'd like to open the meeting then. Anybody want to make comments? Either Dimaxian or Project Forge people? Go ahead. Just identify yourself.
Sure. Jeff Dean, Dimaxian Development. First, I'd like to thank the Township staff and the Township engineering firm for really diving deep into this project with us over the past few months. We understand that this is a very significant project for the Township, and it's also a very significant project for us. I've personally spent quite a bit of time at both Township Board of Trustees and Planning Commission meetings over the past two or three years here in Bath Township, and I feel like I've really got to know the community of Bath, and at least to the best of my ability, understand the priorities that the community has. So in choosing this site with our partners from Norm Fasteners, we really intentionally chose Bath because we thought that this was a good fit for the community. You know, a form and direct investment of this size is something that's very attractive to many communities, but something that I saw over the past few years, coming into these meetings and dealing with you as a body, and as well as the Board of Trustees, and the community as a whole, is that this is a fantastic community to work in, and despite the fact that sometimes we may have disagreed about certain things, we've always been able to navigate through problems together and sensibly come to solutions. So Norm Fasteners has been a long-term partner of ours. They're actually, you know, the president and CEO of the company is an MSU alumni, and we've known each other for a very long time. So homing them here in Michigan is kind of a big responsibility for us. So we ultimately, after a lot of consideration, felt that Bath was the best place for them to be. Looking at the Webster Road corridor, and, you know, I've heard a lot of comment about that portion of the Township over the past few years, and many people have different ideas of what that should look like. We did our best to try to consider an overall master plan concept for the corridor and how we intentionally placed this building. So we didn't, you know, we don't currently own the entire site, so we can't, we can only take our master planning efforts so far, but we've worked with Mr. Kessler very closely to try to develop a set of parameters that, once this facility, if you approve it, is constructed, allow for, you know, very productive development around the corridor, along the corridor that satisfies many of the needs that I've heard from the community and from commissioners and board members over the past few years. So this project is a big project, and there's, Miles has created an extensive list of conditions that we think are actually pretty appropriate, and I think we generally agree with, and I think we have the ability to work together with both our engineering firm, the Township's engineering firm, to come up with any solutions to outstanding issues that remain. So tonight's an important night. We actually invited the president and CEO of Norm Fasteners to come here and speak to you. He came here from Turkey and would like to just make himself known to the community and be available for any questions that anyone may have. There's also a member of the Board from Norm that's here, as well as a few other representatives from the company. So Norm Fasteners is pretty unique in the way that they operate, and they're really showing up in person to deal with any of the issues that anyone in this room may have with this development, and we're completely available for any questions anyone may have. So I'd like to invite Mr. Menewissall to the podium to just introduce himself and give a few words. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank the Commission and the community of Bath Township for letting me present myself and about the company. Very briefly, my grandfather started the company on 1973, and I'm representing the third generation in the company. I have a sister. She's the head of the sustainability committee, commission in our company, and I'm running the operations for the past five years. We have companies in Germany, in Poland, in Romania, in France, for sales and distribution. The headquarters is in Izmir. We do the production and supply the parts to all around the world. That is a very well-known company, like Ford, Tesla, Volkswagen Group, and other car producers, and also for the white goods that is being produced in Turkey and out of Turkey. So main business is Fasteners, but we have other small businesses too, like canned tangerines, and also 3D printing. And we have a software development company back in Turkey, which is located in one of the university campus. And especially, it's not only an industrial company. My grandfather was very committed with education and arts. We have an art gallery located in the company, where people can come out and just like use it as a place to do some paintings. And my grandmother is out there too, also. Two days of a week, they go out there and then gather together, so they do the paintings. So it's an art gallery. They can use it as a gallery, anyone wish, in the community of Izmir. And we, my grandfather built up a school after his mother's name in his hometown, which is like managed by the government, the Ministry of Education, and we have apprentice schools within the company that, I can explain that, like what we call the lost kids, that is like not studying in the high school, in the middle school. We just collect them. We select the kids. We get them in the company, and then two days of a week, they're in the class for lectures, and three days of a week, they're on the workshop. So after like regular education, they get the high school diploma, and they become like technical workers in our facilities, also in the other facilities in the industrial zones. They don't have to only work for us. So this is a program that we are doing with, again, with the government, the Ministry of Education. So we also have a high school built up in the industrial zone, again, managed and controlled by the government, Ministry of Education. So we have different programs that we are using to train and educate young kids, and also just like to bring up engineers for the community. So we are working like close with the universities. We have very close relationships. And yeah, I'm the third generation, and this project is also a very big project for us. I can understand it's a big project for Bath Township, but it's a very strategic and very big project for us. So it's very important that we will be manufacturing outside of Turkey what we call ourselves as a global company, but also local, because we are companies in different countries right now. But of course, manufacturing in another country is a big thing for us too. And as Jeff said, I'm an MSU alumni. I consider this place as my second home also, so I spent five years out here. I love the place very much, and Jeff, thanks to him, he helped me a lot with everything when I started the business here in 2018 with Cori, our manager. So there's some kind of emotional bond between me and the area, of course, because of Michigan State. So we are here to answer any kind of questions, and from the community, from the Commission. If there's any questions, Cori, my team, Jeff, my friend, he's out here to answer any questions. Thank you for letting me explain and presenting myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe the technical purpose of this meeting is to address the planning and zoning considerations for this project, but it is pretty hard for me to ignore the economic and societal impact that occurs when something like this happens. So we've recently done an economic analysis, which we have shared with Miles and can be shared with any of the folks in this room. It indicates that, you know, by doing this project, if it's moved forward, you know, several million dollars, I believe the number that I saw was 3.5 over the next 20 years, directly to the Bath School System, for example. So I know that technically we're here to look at land use and see if this is conforming, but it's really, it's hard for me to ignore those types of figures when I see them. This could really, as Mr. Fair said, transform this community and change the face of it. It's our intention to build a very nice-looking product at the entrance to Bath Township, and we believe that it'll increase the value of the community in general. And all of the services and all of the folks that depend on tax revenue coming in that we've spoken with have been very, very supportive of the project, and I think that that's something that's hard to ignore. So we're in a position where all of our feasibility says that we can move forward, and we're really hoping that you take it upon yourselves to consider taking a vote tonight. One of the primary reasons for that is we're hoping to be in front of the MSF Board for the PA 198 in December. So a vote tonight would unlock that. And again, I'll make myself available, and anyone from Norm that's here will also make themselves available, and that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
I'm at a disadvantage. All of you guys have been studying this for weeks and months, and all of you are very much aware of what's going on in this project, and I'm just a community member who doesn't know beans about industry. But I did look up online, the, one of your sites in Europe, I've forgotten, I think it must have been in Germany, and trying to visualize myself, what's going to go on inside this building. They talked about bringing in steel and tempering it so that you could then stamp out whatever your product is. And that made me wonder, is that what's going to be here? Is this going to be like an internal forge where you temper steel and so that it's malleable when you want to stamp out a product? And if so, does that require a lot of water to cool the tempered steel down? And is that going to impact our wetlands? I just... I just, I don't have any feeling for what's happening here. So, I thought maybe you could explain to me a little bit about the actual functional workings and what's necessary for it, high heat, water, that kind of thing.
Go ahead, sir. Absolutely.
And I apologize if you all know the answer to this already.
No, that's fine.
Hi, Coray Gugu, so it's becoming a habit, so my second time will flee, you know, third time will be a different reason. So, thank you for giving the opportunity, and a great question. Of course, we shared all the information, especially about the technical side and engineering side of the project with the related parties, but the project itself, we're not producing parts using vertical stamps. So, these stuff, these parts, I mean, the steel we're bringing in is our wires, basically, and these are, the biggest size is less than, less than an inch of thickness. So, you just think of these wires, rolled wires, and what we do with it is we shape it first on horizontal cold forge machines, and these are, they cut, they're cut in size, in, in diameters, and also in length, and then within the machine itself, depending on five or six or seven station machines, they're shaped. So, these verti- these, these horizontal presses, you're not feeling any kind of vibration outside. So, and, and once these parts are shaped, which we plan to build or manufacture bolts, and while Miles was talking about his presentation before, he said, "Let's get to the nuts and bolts of the project," so it, it felt great. So, the bolts there, it's just after the bolts are shaped, they go into heated furnaces. These furnaces are about 100 feet, 150 feet, depending on what you want to do, and they're, they're heated inside the furnace. So, it's not like a, it's like a steel mill, it's not like a steel mill. So, the temperatures are not like 2,000 Fahrenheit. So, it's lower, and then the way they're cooled is there's special cooling systems, liquids that are dropped into. So, from outside, or the water usage, the utilities, we already shared, so it's been checked and it's confirmed that the city's infrastructure is able to support it. So, you're not going to be using, we're not going to be using a lot more water, or it's going to create any shortage in terms of the residents' use for residents' use. So...
And I'd real quick just jump in the water side of the conversation. You miss, our municipality actually doesn't own or operate our water system, it's owned by Border Water and Light. Our concern with the waterfall from that system was more to do with the water suppression system and its capacity than their actual forging process itself. But, that, those were conversations we had with the Border Water and Light, they did reassure us that their system has a capacity to provide for the site.
And my concern was the outflow, because we're so close to the wetlands and the stability of the land.
Yeah, so like the wastewater output? That, that's another conversation for, now, that system, this wastewater and sewage flow, that is a system we own, and Southern Clinton County Municipal Utility Authority operates that system, and the township owns it. You guys will be doing treatment on-site before it goes into that system. That way, there's not so much of a draw for the taxpayer or, or treatment plan.
And there's no water that's going to be leaked outside the building itself. They go all through the water treatment system, wastewater treatment system inside, and then they're just let out.
Yeah, we won't be directing anything into the ground or any aquifer or anything like that.
Is it going to the Ringy Chandler rain system though?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, that's perfect questions, I mean, and it's typically, it's very normal for you to ask, I mean, you're very happy to supply answers if you can.
If I could just make one clarification, you said water suppression, I think you meant fire suppression.
Fire suppression, yeah. Fire suppression, my apologies.
Just wanted to make it clear to you, Joan.
Well, if I remember right, a lot of your water is treated internally and then reused.
Yep.
Oh, your discharge is...
And we have our heating systems, we're, we're, we have this heated system, we use that.
Yeah, so your, your actual discharge to the sewerage system is minimal.
All the utility calculations, including water, or gas, or electricity, has been shared, calculated according to the real usage that we have on our facilities in Turkey, and these, of course, change and converted to the systems, and then we share it with the related parties, and so far, and it's very important for us as well, because we need to make sure that we're getting that supply from, from location. So, we are okay with it so far.
And, and I guess last point, just to reiterate again, all those agencies have a condition on the staff report that they will do a inspection of the submitted construction plans and all supporting materials prior to the issuance of a building permit. So, all the agencies, Border Water, Light, SCUMA, Drain Commission, Township Engineer, they're going to get a second look at this thing just to make sure that everything's good to go before any construction is allowed.
I mean, I didn't mention, but I think during the last meeting I mentioned too, we, all the production we do in Turkey are according to the EU regulations, and I've shared some of the analysis that we got, actual analysis as of November of last year, when we did that study, compared it to the EU standards, our results, and the US limits, USA's limits, and they were all within the limitations. So, we feel confident, and we also promised that if there's any additional treatment needed, we would be more than happy to do it, but so far, everything was good. More questions? Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Anyone else got any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Hi, Anne Chapey, 14696 Rotsarou. I am with Bath Community Schools, I'm our board president. After the last meeting, I went back and talked to the rest of the board and the staff, and we are really excited at the potential educational opportunities for our kids. I think it would be a great partnership, it would open up the trades for a lot of the kids that are not college-bound, and they wouldn't have to go outside our community. Right now, we send our kids to St. John's, or Duett, or even into Lansing, so it would be a plus to have something here. And, secondly, it's going to bring us a lot, extra income, the tax dollars, we have aging facilities. It's not, our sinking fund and budget is not keeping up with the costs of our buildings. So, it would be a great additional income for the schools, and it would allow us to focus on education and not have to worry about spending tax dollars on a new roof, or, we had a wall collapse this year, and it took our whole sinking fund to fix it. So, if anything else goes wrong, we have a potential problem. And granted, the taxpayers have been wonderful passing our bonds and our sinking fund, but this would just make it a little bit easier for us, and I think it, it would be a great partnership for our kids, and our kids are why we're here, and most importantly, and if we can keep them in Bath, as I said last time, instead of seeing our kids move away because there's not the potential jobs. And these would be good-paying jobs to hopefully keep our kids in Bath. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one last question, I promise not to ask anymore. This is such a huge concept, it's going to be such a visible piece in our community, and I was wondering if there was any attention to the architectural face, the outward face that the community sees, because it's going to be quite large, and it would be really a beautiful opportunity for simple, but not just concrete block, something to be proud of as a visual. I make that comment with somebody who loves city beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think each of these planning commissioners asked us the same question in our individual meetings, but I'm happy to address it. We're a very design-minded firm, so we do, we spend a lot of time, probably too much, in, in design thinking. So, there were a lot of considerations taken when we were coming up with a conceptual master plan for how that would look, and there's no getting around it, the building is a big box, okay? But how do you make a big box look as appealing as it possibly can? And we went through many of those thought exercises with both of our, our design team and, and our internal staff. There's somewhat of a representation of it in front of you here, in this stack of, of renderings that unfortunately are all in the staff, but there's more, we're behind that if you want to flip through them, but a couple techniques that we employed to address that issue of it being a giant box was undulating colors, just so you don't have a, and, you know, they're not like bright ugly colors, they're muted reasonable colors, but by undulating the colors, it, it has the same effect as camouflage, for example, and not having one giant unobstructed surface just kind of grab your eye. And we've also paid close attention to the roof lines and the roof height lines where they fall on site. So, if you look at the rendering that's in front of you on this easel, you see that there's, in the front represented what a normal suburban strip center would look like. And the way that the building falls behind that, if you do the trigonometry to, I actually took my truck and parked in the middle of Webster Road to think about what that building would look like behind this other building, which is ultimately represented here. And what happens is these other buildings that hopefully someday surround this building kind of beautify and break up what's a manufacturing facility, and hopefully those buildings contain services such as restaurants and daycares and the things that the residents of Bath that live in the northern parts of Bath, that ultimately access the freeway down here, need when they get on and off the highway, right? So, the, the concept would be, you know, make as beautiful of a building as we can with the, the parameters that were given, but even more than that, just utilize a little bit of design thinking in how we, how we ultimately develop the entire site. Obviously, Mr. Kessler here owns the remainder of the site, but we've worked together to try to envision how this would all work. We, we'd end up with a, a really appealing corridor, where you get off and there's some traditional services that the residents of Bath would like to use, and employment center right behind it. So, some of the material choices that we've actually used, or that we've designed in here, or physically here, so next to Matt over there is a masonry sample, so we intend to have a masonry facade on part of the building, which is a very nice thing for an industrial building, you know, a lot of these things are just big giant steel pole barn looking things. And over here, you have some insulated metal panels. The entire building is, is designed to structurally be built out of steel, but then wrapped in these insulated metal panels that are super energy efficient, and if the correct colors and textures are, are chosen, they actually look pretty slick. So, there are some examples of buildings that we participated in around the state. This isn't our first rodeo, so we've done this, and we've done it right, we've done it wrong, and our, our team has done it both ways. So, we, we would hope that, that our cumulative experience and just kind of thinking through this very intentionally would result in something that is appealing when you, when you drive down Webster Road.
Any more questions for the public, any comments? Commissioners, what would you like to address about this project?
The question of the water usage come up, I know the Board of Water might look at this, there's a lot of vacant land around here, so is the Board convinced that they can supply water to all the rest of the vacant land between this and the freeway, and also between here and into the north with no problem? The other question I had was, in looking at the plans, I noticed that there are two connections for the water main on the south side of the building. One, it doesn't show what the existing water line sizes are, but I'm assuming it must be a 12-inch for a while, and then it goes to an 8-inch, because you've got a 12 by 8 by 8 connection at one point, and an 8 by 8 by 8 connection at another point. So, that tells me there's a 12-inch flowing water line for a while, and it goes to an 8. Be nice to have those existing sizes on the plan.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Sure, absolutely.
Kevin, you might be able to speak to this better than me, but Border Water and Light, one thing is kind of interesting, I would say, first off, of working with Border Water and Light, is we haven't always had the township, the best working relationship with the Board, just because they are so, they are so independent than us. We've had a much better relationship with SCUMA, because we have invested interest, we own the system. But, usually, they don't give us any agency review at all, there's no comment, fun. However, we did get a last-minute agency review from them, we actually scheduled a meeting, and we have a meeting now set up to do just some general master planning with the Board in Bath, because there has been so much going on. They've asked to change up, and I think the development team has been responsive to their ask, and so we'll get this all flushed down, a set of construction plans, but they changed up the loop, the looping nature, I guess I'll say, of the water system before it was going to just loop along with the drives to create a redundancy into their system and just overall be more efficient. They've asked it to come up the drive, make a right, go north again, make a left, and then go north and out along with the sewer. That will create a more efficient loop, and it will create a redundancy if there's ever a water supply issue on the south, they can cut water to that and still supply the site from the north. So, just so, and it's efficient for the developers, because I think overall, it cuts down the footage of pipe left to install, so it's kind of a win-win. But, yeah, those dimensions and all that will be flushed down, a set of construction plans in line with the Board's standards and review by the Township Engineer to make sure it meets our standards. And I, I guess I'll also say the development has invested interest, because they need water. I mean, if they don't have water, they're dead in water.
So, the water line will not completely enclose the building anymore?
No, they'll, they'll come up this way and around, and then they'll tie in their service line somewhere in the area, either with one service line or possibly multiple, that's up to you guys, it's out of my scope.
But, is there still going to be fire hydrants on the west side of the building?
Yeah, those will have to be reviewed and approved by the fire marshal, because I think right now they do show some of those. And they could even do that by supplying those fire hydrants through, I guess there's a number of ways to get through it. I'll leave that up to the Township Engineer and the fire marshal to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I do have one question. My name is Dale Hosford.
Go ahead, Mr. Hosford. Go ahead, would you go up to the podium?
You betcha.
Thank you.
Well, my name's Dale Hosford, I'm a local in the area, and I'm a contractor, and I was just wondering if you guys were going to be taking open bids or using local people on this project if you had us going into the community.
Sure. Thank you for that question, Mr. Hosford. Certainly, we, in fact, have used Mr. Hosford's concrete company in the past and believe it to be the finest in the land. Or, or, and I'm not, I'm not just blowing smoke, he really does fantastic work. So, all, it's, it's a priority for us whenever we build something to use as much local labor as possible. So, in any circumstance where, where local labor is possible to be used, we would 100% do that. So, in fact, there's, there's only a few local contractors that could accomplish a pour of that size, and we would hope that, hope that that would happen. It's a, just in the world of concrete, I mean, we're talking a multimillion dollar concrete pour, so the, the citizens of Bath that, that Mr. Hosford employs would potentially benefit from that, so. But that, that applies to actually every aspect of construction, so not just concrete. Every other aspect that's, that's deliverable locally gets a preferential treatment from us, and that's, in the past, we've operated like that, even in, even in Bat Township, using, using local labor wherever possible. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Anyone else from the, go ahead.
I brought this up with Brandon in a conversation. Miles, if you could go to the first, the first page, and it's about the lengths of, of trucks. I know this is such a large file that our computers are having a problem with it. My, my graphics are the same, kind of jerks.
One more.
One more. Right there, and if you could enlarge it so we can see those...
Yeah, that's easy.
Okay, if you see where the, where the, where the overhead doors are, you have, you have it on your plans that that's 70 feet from the, from the pavement. If you go down, Miles, just a little bit so we can see the bottom there, I don't know if the designer implied that those were semi-tractor trailers backed in there, in that graphic at the bottom, if you see there, with six of them side by side, but a semi-tractor trailer is 74 feet long, and that, that, how do you say, anyway, the, the approach there to the overhead door is 70 feet. So, you're going to have, you're going to have your tractor backed in there, and he's going to be, the tractor is going to be sticking out right on the pavement, and then he's going to have to pull out of there with a 74-foot truck onto a 60, well, it's going to be 50 feet from there, so it's going to be kind of a bunch of squeijaw. And I, and I say this and mention this because... And I say this and mention this because I used to run a truck fleet and I hear a lot of bitching about this. So if there was any way you could make it so that they could come out and straighten it out and go right in like that, you would make more efficient than you would know and a lot less headaches for your carriers that are going to be coming in and out. And one thing, just as personal curiosity, when you bring in, I assume you're bringing in coil steel, is that going to be unloaded from overhead or are you going to just back it into the dock and have fork trucks take it off or what?
Fork, that's for fork.
Is it? Okay.
But also a little bit of cranes.
Where I used to be, we had it pulled right in and you just, you know, took it off with an overhead.
Yeah, with the crane, it's a little bit slower. So we'll punch a crane from both sides via fork.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know how you could fit in any more room there, but I just wanted to make note of that those little tractor trailers in there are about 12 or 14 feet too short. 74 feet is what a tractor trailer is maximum. They could use, you know, the little pups, the half size, but that would be, you'd have to order those specifically. Just a suggestion. That's all I have.
Yeah, that was one of the more, and I guess I won't always thank the Planning Commission for bringing the expertise to this. You guys have such diverse backgrounds. You see stuff on the plans that we don't always notice just because of the nature of the asset background. But that was something that we recently talked about. Some plans were provided on interior traffic flow and then term radius calculations with larger vehicles. But again, that's something that we've placed a condition on that the Road Commission review just because it's not necessarily always in their scope, but we just felt like they were the agency that was most apt to do that type of review.
Anyone else got any questions, comments? Go ahead, George.
Question about the roof. That's a lot of stormwater runoff. And I know the Drain Commissioner has made his points, but it actually would be flowing, I read northwest, and from what little I've seen, it would be to the southeast.
It'll be grabbing, it'll be going in both directions.
Both directions, yeah.
Yeah. But they're going to grab what they can and take it north. Everything else will go south. And I, you know, if you want to, the developer, the Township Engineer, if you guys want to talk to the stormwater flow off the roof at all or your roof design.
If the Drain Commissioner says yes.
Yeah, sure.
So obviously this is a very, very large roof, so it certainly moves a lot of stormwater. The Drain Commissioner sent a very thoughtful email last week addressing with his opinions on how this should be handled. And I think in general, both the Township Engineer and our engineer at KEBs, we've all been working together to try to solve that problem. So I anticipate stormwater will be an ongoing conversation until ultimately the Drain Commissioner puts his stamp on it. And I feel pretty confident, I acknowledge it's a real issue that we have to deal with and it's large. But I feel pretty confident that the team that is addressing it is capable of coming up with a solution. And obviously, regardless of what happens here tonight, no building permits ultimately going to be issued until we all come to terms on that. But yeah, I was very impressed with Mr. Morrison's detailed analysis and his thoughts that he put into it. And we've had several meetings since then to try to address that.
John, you're talking about how Mr. Morrison, I was trying to remember.
Yeah, yeah. We deal with several Drain Commissioners regionally and his approach to how to deal with this has been very constructive. And it is a big problem to solve and we're all treating it with that level of respect. And I think there's a lot of bouncing around going on, but we're moving together down the tracks and I think we'll be able to solve that problem. I appreciate you bringing it up and it's certainly something that we are very cognizant of.
George, you had something to say?
I was just going to ask, wasn't there some changes in the height that I read in there, the walls?
Yeah, so height has always been something that has been a disappointing discussion. I'll have to say, obviously the maximum height in Bath Township is 35 feet. And that the purpose behind that height is because we all have a lighter truck. So that's the highest that we can put out fires. The structure will be sprinkled. One point of note though, and that's why there was some particular language in my staff review about the height of the structure. Let me get to that page if I have it.
I couldn't find it quickly, but I knew it was in there.
Yeah, they've changed it before.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
There are some provisions, whoever wrote, let's see, this article of the ordinance had something like this in mind. Yeah, it's Article 15 Special Provisions. There is a subsection of that article that addresses height when it comes to industrial facilities. This article also applies, like church fires would be another good example. Unoccupied areas of facilities such as church fires or industrial facilities where they need to go above the maximum height are permitted in Bath Township as long as they are sprinkled and unoccupied. So a human can't be in that part of the building. So that's what allowed for some variation on the height.
And what will be the maximum height of it?
It doesn't call for a maximum height, but it's a part of this review. It uses, you know, and sometimes zoning ordinances do this, it uses terms like reasonable.
So the sightline of the building itself will stay as it was in the original plan?
Yeah, I mean, this site, and the developer in Jeff Dehan spoke to this a little bit because this site, for better or for worse, and it does cause a number of engineering needs to get over, for better or worse, this structure sits quite low in the overall sightline. So as you're looking at it from Webster Road, it won't appear very tall.
Oh, I had a question too about that, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
One of you guys could answer it. Just by looking at the various drawings, it looked like it was going to be down about 12 or 14 feet from the president. Because I know that you're almost building it on the top of a hill. So is that generally speaking about how far in you're going to have to go down?
I defer the engineers on that one. Greg, you want to take the, take a moment? I can, yeah, I can try.
All right, Greg P. True with KEBs. So you're looking at the height of the building?
No, the ground level, the floor level of the.
Sure. Miles, can we go to the grading plan?
And I saw it in there. I just hoped that you could explain a little better to me.
Yeah, so as an engineer, this site, you know, if you move the building one foot, everything changes.
Exactly.
So we've had it at different elevations.
It says 858. It used to be 862, I think.
The first time we did it was 862. And, you know, with the sanitary sewer, we were trying to keep it at a certain elevation above the pipe. So we brought it down so that the east side that where the sanitary sewer is, we could keep that distance between the pipe and the ground at a certain elevation. So right now at 858, we are like 12 feet lower than where the barn is.
Oh, okay. That's where I saw.
If that's a good.
Yep. No, that's good.
Okay, yeah. So that's like the biggest dropping point right by that barn.
And that's why I said for better or for worse, because visually there's some benefit to that from the engineer's perspective. I'm driving crazy.
And the elevated area, is it heat treating? Is that what it's going to be? In the back, the northwest corner?
Northwest.
Yeah. So that's, will allow it to not even be seen from Webster Road probably. Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one.
Go ahead.
I know that the parking provided for this site is much less than what our zoning ordinance requires, but to me.
We didn't do it though. So there was some debate about, I didn't mean to cut you off, but there was some adjustment in the parking ordinance because there's two ways to measure parking for industrial sites by ordinance. So you can go by the largest number of shifts or the largest shift that would occupy the structure or by square footage. And what our ordinance says is you are supposed to calculate both of those and then defer to the largest. Now, when it goes by square footage, it goes by usable square footage. And so the developers had to do some calculations to figure out what was usable square footage it looked like in a facility. And that's what led to, off the top of my head, the parking requirement was 161 based upon their usable square footage counts, and they came in at 162. So from the zoning perspective, I guess we're set on parking.
Yeah, I was going to say, because the maximum number of employees is going to be about 200, but that's going to be in three shifts. So the maximum number of employees at the site in one time would be 120, 130, 140, something like that. So much less than the number of parking spaces you've got.
Yeah.
Just wanted to bring that up because I think there's enough parking.
That's why based upon the calculation going off of shifts numbers and how many people are occupied, the count came out to be 54 parking spots. But going off square footage, that's why they played around with usable square footage.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Doctor.
Is it appropriate to speak about the sewer upgrades and the cost of that? And maybe we have somebody from LEAP or from Miami DC here that could speak to that? Maybe we, because that's not a.
I don't think it's so much the sewer upgrade as it is, our long-term plan is to reroute some of that sewer.
Right. But I'm here just for this project. It's going to cost upwards of $6 million to upgrade the sewer system. And I just wonder, are we going to potentially have to foot that bill or are we going to get some financial assistance from Michigan Economic Development Corporation or LEAP or something of that nature?
Hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Hutchison. I'm the Tri-County Development Manager with LEAP. Couple of weeks back, we met with some of you to discuss the sewer expansion for this project for the township. And the Township Engineer said that it'd be about $6.6 million. We worked really hard with the state and over the matter of three days, we were able to secure about $3.9 million for the township. That does come with a little caveat, so no pressure to you all tonight. But we do have to get this approval in for the MSF Board debriefing by December 7th so that they can make a final vote and this be on their agenda by December 12. So all goes well, yes, the state is promising to roll in $3.9 million to the township.
Did I hear you say $6 million?
Yep. $3.9 million. Let me get close to the microphone for you. I wish. No, but the $3.9 million should actually offset this project's usage. So we're hopeful that that is a good enough amount.
And can I speak to, I guess, something that may further? Again, I really would like to keep this conversation in the prism of land use policy, but just, you know, so everyone has full information because I don't want to feel like I'm recording a secret over here. Obviously, when any development goes in in Bath Township for municipal services, there's tapping fees with those developments. So there's money coming from the state, but there's also, it's a large facility with a large RUs. So there's going to be a large tapping fee as well. And that will also help with some of these sewer conversations. That's a tapping fee that we know we wouldn't be getting if we weren't talking about this type of development. And then, I don't know, Kevin, you want to speak to our overall master plan for the sewer? That's probably.
Hello, everyone. Kevin Gritters with Prentice Newhoff Consulting Engineers for the Township. So one thing that you may know about the Township sewer system, you've had on your master plan for a number of years now, extension of this large diameter, deep, we call it an equalization sewer. So the construction of that started a number of years ago. There was a phase up Long Drumheller. And it's master planned to ultimately come from that lift station south and then east, and it accomplishes two things. It provides a large volume of storage in the pipe, which can help with pump station 203, and we're getting technical details now, but it's relevant. It helps with the pumping from that station when there's a lot of volume behind it. It can keep the peak flows down that that station has to pump, which protects the township's systems further downstream. So one aspect of it is to provide a lot of storage in the system. And it also ultimately is intended to eliminate the lift station that's right here across Webster Road. And eliminating pump stations is always good because it's less maintenance, less electrical costs, less everything. So with those two purposes for that master plan sewer, the concept has always been that it somehow gets from lift station 203 up Long Drumheller down to lift station 219. And the concept was to go straight south from that station and then east along the south property line of this parcel that we're talking about tonight to get there. Well, a master plan is a master plan and it's only as good as what the concept is based on what we know at the time. And then a development can happen and that all can go out the window. Well, there's an opportunity here to work in conjunction with this development to build this master plan sewer, to still accomplish both of the township's master plan goals, have it built concurrently with this project, have the connection fees, have the funding from the state, all contribute toward the township's ultimate goal of getting this pipe in place. So it's a really big pipe. It's a really deep sewer. But that's one of the things we've been working with the development team on laying out that concept. It factors into some of these decisions here about what the site looks like. But ultimately, I think there's a workable plan that can accomplish the township's goals in conjunction with the site development and have everything come together. So that's a little bit of the backstory on the sanitary sewer piece.
Is that 60 inch, that expansion? I call it an expansion tank is what I call it.
Yeah, basically. That's the ballpark of what it would be.
Okay. Thank you.
It's basically a flow equalizer is what it falls to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you zoom that out? I don't have any other questions.
No more questions? George, did you have any?
I don't know.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
You're good? I have a couple of questions. When I saw the videos, you have a lot of outside storage of coil stock. Are you planning on outside storage of coil stock?
No. The video you saw, the video you saw was.
Thank you, sir.
So the video you watched and some of the members of the planning committee watched was for Turkey. And some of the processes we do in Turkey are going to be different than the process we do over here. And because of the weather conditions, there's some, of course, some propriety information there. We would like to keep some of our raw material outside for some period of time. But here, because of the weather conditions, it's different, so we're not going to be doing that here in short.
So you're going to warehouse all the coil stock inside?
Yeah, most of it. And if it needs be, it has to stay, if it needs to stay outside, it's not going to be for a long period of time, so the public will not see it.
When you say long period of time?
It's not like, you know, the ones that you've seen, we keep them outside on purpose and as long as they are needed, they're kept outside in Turkey. And when they need to go inside, they go in. So we can keep them even two months, three months.
Just-in-time delivery doesn't work real well in the United States.
Yeah, yeah. We know, we have been working with the suppliers, it's a raw material suppliers, and they said that they would be able to deliver weekly, but we are considering at least monthly.
Sounds like a conservative plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, the elevation you're talking about, that's for your annealing furnaces because you're using the.
Yes, that's for what we call LOI or annealing furnaces, valve-shaped furnaces, only for the raw materials preparation and preparing them before we start doing other operations.
You're using it for annealing and normalizing.
True.
Yeah, gotcha. I still have concerns about the runoff from this project, quite honestly. I know Jeff and I have had a lot of discussion about stormwater runoff over the last, what, year? Year and a half, Jeff?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know that it's been addressed to what I consider my. And, uh, I, I don't know that it's been addressed to what I consider my satisfaction. I've had a lot of conversations with John Morrison about it, and I know our track record's not real good, um, stormwater runoff.
Yeah, we, uh, one critical difference, I'll tell you, uh, between this site and the, our previous site that we, um, we had some challenges with, is, uh, we feel that we're in much better hands from an engineering perspective. Um, we have, we hired a different firm than we used for, for that site. Uh, we, we're actually pretty frustrated with, uh, some of the stormwater as well that's, that's going on at that site, the tune of, I think we have about three, four-hundred thousand dollars in rework over there. So, it's been quite a, quite an effort. Uh, we've actually, we're neighbors with Mr. Hosford over here, and we've been picking away at it for the last year, and, um, I think we're, it's not perfect, but we're getting there, you know? Um, we've, we've installed many additional me, measures from, uh, what were originally engineered, and our hope is that with, uh, the additional, uh, skill level of the current engineering firms that we're working with, both Prine and Newhoff and our firm KEBs, as well as the lessons learned, um, at that site and with the same team, hopefully, um, we're, we're able to not repeat the past. So, um, yeah, we're keenly aware of that, uh, circumstance, and we, we understand that the tremendous amount of stormwater will be, uh, needed to be dealt with on this site, and we're, we're willing to make, we're willing to come to the table with all the parties I just mentioned and do whatever we need to do to come up with a solution to that. Furthermore, Mr. Kessler has actually, um, had some conversations with a neighbor in the back and tried to address some, some of his concerns, um, and we're really, so there's really a, a large group of, of folks involved in the stormwater conversation, and, uh, it's much, much greater than me. I'm not an engineer, um, but I do stand out at our site where we did have stormwater problems on rainy days, and I stare at that water and try to figure out solutions for it, and I, I sure hope, uh, we don't have to do that at this site, and I, I do believe that we have a competent team to solve that problem.
Our track record with KEBs is much better than your previous.
Yeah, I, I agree, so.
Well, that's, that was one of my major concerns, and I'm really not thoroughly convinced that we've thoroughly addressed the problem. Uh, Mr. Kessler, would you mind commenting about any discussions you've had with the property owner to the west, because that's one of the concerns I have, and John Morrison as well.
Well, he, uh, he in turn, I had, uh, talked to the drain commission, and we'd even talked of possibly carrying that ditch from the solid all the way up to Drumheller to take care of any water problems up there, and he explained to me, that's not what he wants. He has his walkways and his wetlands in there, and which had been dry up until this year. Finally, he, he had enough moisture in it, and he understands that there is gonna be a certain amount of water that's gonna come down Drumheller and flow through his pond area. His biggest concern was that it would dry him up.
Oh, okay.
And that won't be the case, because there'll be a certain amount of water, I talked to John Morrison about it, and we've got first flushes all the way around this building, and, and the stuff on the north would end up going down into that, uh, small wetland of our own, which is not regulated, by the way.
Right, correct.
Uh, and then it would be held there and let out at a slower rate, yet taking care of the neighbors.
Oh, okay, I was not aware of that.
And that all has to be worked out with John, no matter what happens here, you, uh, that has to be addressed by John Morrison for a permit to be let, even if you approve it, that will be taken care of through the joint commission.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to bring, uh, up, you know, when we sat and talked about the sewer, uh, that sewer actually was only, uh, forty-foot easement, and that went down our south property line, got back to that wetland that the state has, and had to go down through all that market and back around. By this happening, uh, it actually is gonna save the township money, it's not gonna cost them, uh, in general, I, I'm still waiting to hear what the, the numbers will really be, but, uh, by, uh, it'll all be in solid ground, much ea, a much better project going across this property, and we, if this isn't built, uh, that sewer probably won't, uh, wind up with knowing the location that they're being drawn down.
Yeah, I think it's a much better location for the sewer, for excavation.
No doubt about it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Cusker.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Kessler, you're the owner of record of the property, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Um, are you, are you all in on this project?
I am now.
Okay. What were your reservations?
I, well, it was where I wanted to even do anything.
Oh, okay.
You know, this kind of push and nudge me, I'm eighty-three years old, and, you know, one of these days, I'll probably be in a fine box, so I just shouldn't see something happen now, rather than later.
Sure.
And I think it is a good project for that, okay, this side, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Anyone else got any comments or questions?
Miles, you're looking for action tonight?
Where I'm at, uh, I guess where the planning department is at, is we feel that all zoning has been met here, and it's, uh, within the planning commission's pleasure to take action on this. There, there's really, you've heard, tonight, we've done an exhaustive review of this site, in my opinion. We went from Article One to Article Twenty-Six in the ordinance, and looked at every single one to see if things were met, and if they weren't met, we even did a list here of met, not met. The only thing I think in our report as of last week, Tuesday, was the snow that wasn't met. However, that got addressed through some recent plans. We felt the, those plans satisfied our concerns. Um, I've been on the phone with the township engineer more about this development than I have any development we recently done on Saginaw, uh, probably to his frustration. Uh, so, that, I guess that's where the planning department's at, so it's within the purview of the planning commission at this point, it's you folks' pleasure.
And your recommendation?
I mean, our recommendation is that it's in line with our mess. I can only go off of what our adopted comprehensive plan says, and this is where I get out of the realm of my opinion, and I can only give you, uh, professionally speaking, um, this is in line with the adopted comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So, by that metric, I, I'm bound to give a positive recommendation, just like many times at the Z B A, uh, I'm bound, even though I might like the person, I think it's good, and they're trying to do a shed, and I get it, they don't know where to put the lawn mower, I'm bound by our ordinance to give a negative recommendation, no matter how it makes me feel.
Correct.
So, that, that's where we're at with this development.
That's your position, and that's your job, and I respect that. Anybody got any else they'd like to say?
I struggle with the harmonious part of it.
Harmonious part? Uh, well, the food bank is there, and it's an altogether different use of the property.
There's gonna be something.
There's gonna, I guess, there's gonna be something.
It appears that the landscaping has been taken-
I'm sorry, what?
The landscaping, the trees, double-rilla trees in the front, all of that.
There is a landscape plan.
There's a landscape plan, and one of our conditions is also to increase the amount of plantings along the border with the neighboring property. Even though there's woods there, um, it still is a residential parcel, so we want to make sure we have above our minimum buffering there, and the developers spoke positively to that.
Anybody got anything else?
So, what kind of a motion do we need to, to continue on?
I guess, uh, I, I would recommend that the site plan be approved with the recommended set of conditions as stated in the petition to S A P report tonight, and then we'd be looking for a recommendation from this body to the board for the special use permit. So, we're looking for approval, approval with conditions or denial of the site plan, and we're looking for a recommendation, uh, for the special use permit to the board. And those can come together as one motion, or as two separate motions, however this body feels.
Ray, you wanna go with that?
Yep.
Well, you wanted that one piece taken out of the recommendations?
Yeah, and that's why I kinda stated, as it was presented as S A P, because we are looking for that one condition to be removed.
Right, yeah.
I'd make that motion.
I'll sign it.
Because you've got them freezing in the morning.
You're making, uh, both motions simultaneously, Ray, to vote on?
Yes. That's okay with the rest of the board, yes, I would do that.
And you're, and just so, so we're clear, you're looking to approve with conditions-
Yes, with conditions.
-the site plan, and give a positive recommendation for approval of the special use permit?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. So, everybody clear what the question is?
That includes the runoff part that we discussed?
Yeah, all the, uh, caveats, if you want, that's in the conditions.
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to get a roll call vote.
Okay.
Lexi, can you, or Miles, I don't fear who does it.
She's, she's got, she's got a type. I need her to type and get a good set of notes here. Okay. Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Crainer?
Yes.
Sheriff Reich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaki?
Yes.
Trustee Fions Boys?
Yes.
And then?
Ray.
And then, oh, yeah, sorry, you're not my voice here. And then, uh-
The guy on the end. The other guy.
Your, your, yes?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Uh, makes it passificized?
It passes.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, just because we do have some people that may, I don't know what the customs are, um, it, it wouldn't be offensive to decide if anybody chooses to leave after the item's been addressed, um, so please feel free to enjoy your night, it will still be yours.
It's just minutia after this. Did you read through all these conditions?
Uh, I've spent the last, uh, month steeped in them.
Darryl? Hi, Darryl, thanks for coming. Darryl?
I have one of those lockers down there. Two floodings, and I'm not happy.
Let's talk about that. Yeah, we're not happy, so we're, we're actually, it's a fine, it's awesome.
I'll stand up to you.
Good luck.
Why, why did you orient those buildings the way you did?
We trusted our engineer foolishly.
I hope you learned a lesson from this.
Two, hindsight's always better. Obviously, the bay just, way to go with that engineering.
And even better, you didn't get the asphalt out of the park, so it's gonna be a lot of mud in Turkey.
He made some recommendations for breakfast tonight, so I said, I said, yeah, I'll have to go there.
Thank you, thank you. We need to have lunch sometime.
Yeah.
Do you have my number?
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
I will get it.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for coming.
Good to see you again.
Hi.
Thank you, nicely, nice to meet you.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't-
Great to know who you are.
Right. I appreciate the trip all the way over here.
Thank you, guys.
You're-
Thanks for coming.
You're resident of Turkey?
I am a resident of Turkey, I live in, uh, uh-
Oh, you have? Oh, okay.
I used to live in, uh-
My apologies.
Me too.
But they're, but they're really good this year.
This year, five, five years, right?
Thanks for being here.
Have a nice evening, sir.
Um, she is their, I think she's their finance director?
Yeah, she's the director of finance. Okay, I'll do that.
Oh, the lady? Yeah, she's the director.
None of my questions were inappropriate.
No, no, they're fine.
I just wanted to know, Mr. Kessler's the one.
No, no, I, it's fine.
You can't stay away, huh?
You still, you still got a vested-
Well, thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Still got a vested interest tonight.
Oh, okay. You here to talk about private roads?
No, I'm no listener here.
Well, I haven't closed the public meeting, really.
Yeah, we need to-
Maybe I should close the public.
I was gonna say, you lost the public seat.
Because I lost. Well, Mr. Kessler's here, I certainly-
Yeah, that's true.
Keep him from talking, but I, I'm gonna close the public meeting about, uh, Project Forge, or whatever we wanna call it.
Yep.
Seven twenty-five.
No, not too bad, and we, we do have a small item before we get to, um-
Oh, you're talking about the tree?
Private drives, yeah. We just, we need some answers from you guys, so we know what to write.
Uh-
So, I don't, John, I don't know if you just wanna, go ahead.
Do we mind if we skip, uh, order, and then Mr. Kessler wouldn't have to spend too much time? I know he likes to get an early start in the mornings, so.
We need more.
I know, that's- That's fine.
Would anybody have any objection to that?
We just need a motion to amend the agenda.
I make a motion that we, uh, if it's okay, we remove the antenna for private roads, if you moved them.
So, here is, so thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Can I get a consensus vote? Yes.
So, we see an answer.
No objections? All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Let's, let's do that.
Okay.
She want me to just update?
Yeah, you wanna update, Miles, on, uh, any changes that we made, and kind of overview of any changes?
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm happy that, um, Lexi is here tonight, too, because she has been helping me a lot with, as we've had iterations of edits, she's been helping me with these iterations. It sounds like we have some more edits on the way tonight, and we're receptive to those, um, so if, if we gotta get one more round of edits and get a, this back at the end of the month, I know, Mr. Kessler, we're dying to get this done, but we, we're in the winter now regardless, so this is, the winter's a great time to do ordinances, but I assure you, um, we'll, we'll get this one way or another by spring.
This is a big ordinance, though.
As we've stated in the past, where anything with roads, drives, it affects all of us, so it, it's really gotten built out, probably more than, uh, some folks want to. What really has built this out significantly is the legal review. They added two boilerplate agreements, and I'll speak about how those will be viewed on Muni code. Um, the agreements were, because the problem we've always had with private drives being established in the township, and I, I feel like, and I wasn't here, so let me know if I'm off-base, the reason that we, they were banned in that township was the conflict that they created amongst neighbors. That conflict was created because, it's like, who maintains what? Who has access to the drive? Who's allowed to use the drive? Who's not allowed to use the drive? We've tried to shore that up and at least give, we're, the township's gonna step away once these are established and not administrate the drive itself, it's the private nature of the drive, but we're trying to at least give whoever establishes the private drive and the future landowners that are serviced by the drive, the tools in their toolbox to mitigate their own conflict amongst each other. The way that we've attempted to do this is through the establishment of a maintenance agreement and an access agreement as a part of the private drive being established. Those agreements will, are a requirement of said private drive and/or road, or will, as a part of private roads. They're not as private drives, because a private drive, as defined in this ordinance, only serves two households, we treat those the same we treat driveways currently, but private road will be required to have these two agreements. Um, those agreements are quite, quite lengthy, because lawyers are good at that, they're good at making things long. Um, how we will have them read on Muni code, just so our ordinance isn't, you know, undue long to the public, is it's like when you get a agreement from Apple for a service update, they show you the main stuff up top, and then they have a smaller box within that where you can scroll through if you'd like to read, that's how we're gonna display it on Muni code. Both agreements will be in Muni code in that smaller box you can scroll through on Muni code, it'll only take up half a page, though. So, the developer looking to establish the private drive will be pertinent to them, but for the future administrators of this ordinance, or the future public trying to understand what can and can't be done, they won't be bogged down by the legalese of those two agreements, which are lengthy.
Good, good plan, I like that.
We've also created and finished out this kind of quick cheat sheet of what the standards are between, uh, you know, private drive versus a small private road versus a large private road. The agencies that have looked at this document and the reason why there might be some Frankenstein[1757.82] The agencies that have looked at this document and the reason why there might be some Frankenstein nature to the document and there might be some things that are restated or different agencies have added things. We've tried to make it read comprehensively as one fluid document. It's hard to do when you have a number of agencies feeding information in. But the Road Commission's taken a look at this. They've added language. The Drain Commission's taken a look at this. They've added language. Our township engineer took a look at it. He added language. They're largely responsible for the construction standards section. And then finally, Legale has taken a look at this and added language and amended language. So that's kinda where we're at with this ordinance. I know, John, you had some questions about some standards in there. I know Mr. Severie, um, had some verbiage that he'd like to see us edit. I've always been open to, you know, if there's enough edits, we're just looking over at Mr. Severie's packet. I think there are enough to warrant. I'll probably try to schedule a meeting with him and it sounds like Mr. Baker would like to be at that meeting where we go just line item by line item making edits. That way we can quickly get this hopefully back for next meeting.
Well, I guess, I started reading through this thing and I assumed this was. When I started reading, I thought, okay, this is the ordinance. Then I started reading and I said, this can't be the ordinance. This is so complicated and so convoluted, it makes no sense.
It's definitely complicated and convoluted.
And so then I started looking at this thing, I said, we need to restructure it in some way so that we can say, okay, these are the requirements for private drives. These are the requirements for private roads. Cause right now they're all intermingled together. In some places it says both, some, you know. So we gotta do some structuring with that. And then, I know it's way at the back, it's got a definition for a private. It's got a definition for a private, a public road. And a public street. What's the difference between a public road and public street?
You asked about.
Let's pick a name and decide what it is.
You asked about that before. I guess we didn't, uh, look to address that because the Road Commission's opinion on that whole section was to remove it. They're like, why are you guys talking about public roads at all? We do that. We have standards. You don't. So we, we, we didn't even address the definition of it, cause we're looking to, uh, remove it.
Oh, if we're gonna take it out, then that solves my problem.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so. The Road Commission's actually, they said we're in violation of some of their standards. So please remove said language.
Well, the definition for public streets is okay. That tells you what a public street is regardless of who's maintaining it, but.
Yeah.
But I think it's confusing when you got them both, both definitions in the same document. But then I had some general questions. I had one in here where you create a conflict in here between the, each parcel should designate one individual to represent the parcel in the association. Then down below it says, the vote for each parcel may be exercised by any owner of that parcel, which creates a conflict.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so, and so I made a comment about that. Then I kept, then I kept reading in the paragraph and you've got a paragraph below that. How are you gonna solve the conflict?
Yeah, this, that's, this, I mean, this is the feedback we're looking for. I admit that we're not.
Yeah. The thing is, like, this is written pretty much like a homeowner's association agreement in parts of it. And.
Where is that at, though? What section is that within?
That's page, that's page five, which is, what section is that? Fifty-eight, forty-five?
So is that within the new?
Shared private road access maintenance agreement?
Yeah, so that, that's from legal. So you're, yeah, that's from legal counsel. And that's our designated section.
They've made it so complicated. Just say you've got one vote. Pick who's gonna do the vote. Then it can't be any company. You guys gotta fight it out between the vote, between yourselves for that parcel and you can get rid of most of this.
Yeah.
Just say, there's one, the first paragraph's fine. Each parcel should designate one individual to represent the parcel in the association, period.
I, I.
Forget the vote.
I agree, and I was actually sidebar-ing with Mr. Kessler before this, that lawyers like to overcomplicate things.
Yeah, very much so.
So, so, Mr. Severie, I, I agree. I haven't personally taken a look at that part of it, because we sent out the legal counsel for review and typically with the planning department, when we give something to legal and they give it back, we take it as gospel. But.
You can push back.
But that's, but that's fine. That's where you guys come in. You've called out some conflicts. Let's sit down, let's have a meeting, let's clean some up.
That's, that's the best thing to do, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And just a general, I brought this up before. For a private drive, minimum of ten feet in width, which is fine, I guess. Maximum of twenty feet in length, which to me makes no sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's from the engineers.
I guess I know, I'd like to know what their thinking is about.
I'd have to ask them.
How did we go from a private drive serving one parcel to serving two parcels?
Well, private drives.
Did I miss that somehow?
Yeah, private drive's just a driveway.
Yeah.
But it should only serve one parcel, shouldn't it?
We've al, we've always said that two parcels, we felt like, was fine to just administrate as a driveway.
I don't know, I don't, in.
Well, I realize in some cities, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
In condo associations, like, uh, the ones, we've got the duplexes. They've got shared driveways there. I don't know what the legal.
That's why we kinda, that's kinda, we kinda wrote it in there, because we're already doing it.
Yeah. So there's probably some legal stuff already in that, in their homeowners agreement. How that stuff's handled and who's gonna maintain it and stuff like that.
And it's something that the township already approves as a part of their PUD language. So we thought, okay, this is already happening as a part of the PUD language. Why not just build this in as a feature so other?
Yeah.
Not smaller scale developers, you know, maybe it's just a family looking to establish two homes can take advantage of the same language that a larger developer can take advantage of.
Well, I guess, I guess the thing is, well, I guess, we talked about this before. You can't have two parcels back to back and both service by private drive.
Nope, when we talked about that, we addressed that through the road frontage requirement. Cause that was one of our pairs. But that's what makes this complicated, is you wanna create this simple ordinance that just reads very plainly and is very, but then there's like a thousand spinoff situations that you can create. So if you don't build in these scenarios and anticipate how people are gonna abuse this ordinance, they will abuse it, cause that, it's, it's in their incentive to do. The private sector, the free market, is looking for the path of least resistance to make money. And fundamentally, I guess, our job as the municipality is to be a check against that. And I, that's what we're attempting to do.
I have a question, or maybe an example. One six zero eight six Park Lake Road. Fetch GIS if you, if you will. That parcel is landlocked.
Say the address one more time?
One six zero eight six.
One six zero eight six?
Yeah.
Oh, great, I'm not typing.
The reason, the reason I'm moderately familiar with it is because I brought it to the attention of the township to, for possible purchase for a park. It's been recently purchased by a private individual. And it, it appears to be landlocked. But I looked at the deed description and it shows an eight foot, three inch right of way going out to Park Lake Road. You can't even see it on fetch GIS. It doesn't show. It's in the lower, lower right-hand corner, right there.
Yeah.
That, it's eight, literally, it's full of trees right now. And I, I just don't know, you know, how you would ever access it.
Well, if they had the access through that, they could do it and they could use our PUD language to develop it out. But what this ordinance attempts to do is allow ma, maybe a family or a smaller development firm to develop this parcel. Wouldn't have to be Eastbrook Homes out of Grand Rapids to come in and do something like that.
Well, the reason I ask is, cause the, the right of way going out, you know, the, the flag pole portion of it that goes out to Park Lake Road is literally only eight foot three. And this ordinance is, is stipulating ten feet.
Yeah, you, you couldn't access it.
So I, I guess I would argue that that is, you know.
It's landlocked.
It's totally landlocked.
Yeah.
Because the township owns the lot to the north.
Well, we, we, there's some parcels like that in the township and it's just unfortunate how things have been. It, it's not a bad township thing. I mean, how some of these land divisions have been done over the years is not great. They're, they're, they have paths available to them. None of them are cheap.
I don't understand what you mean.
They, I mean, they could work with this property owners as a site condo. There's language within the site condo that would allow them to change this.
To increase an easement or something?
To increase the easement or even do a division, because site condos have, um, flexibility because the condominium act by the state of Michigan, that preempts local control of how site condos are regulated.
Interesting.
They could bring in a public road. There's a number of things they could do. Again, none of it's easy.
Or cheap.
Or cheap. And with how many houses you might be able to get on there, it probably doesn't make sense on the developer's pro forma.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I didn't know why someone would even want that, with that.
Now, I mean, this, this facility could come in, they could purchase, they could spoke off here and maybe they would be the best party to benefit from this, but. I guess it's not my job to tell the private sector how to make more money.
Oh, no. Yeah. Thanks.
Well, if I ever go the dark side, then I'll, I'll do a really good job at it.
Okay. We would expect no less from you, Miles.
The other thing we need to take a look at when we meet is there's a provision here how they're gonna split the costs on these private roads for maintenance of those. They addressed it in here, but it's very confusing. I think I know what they're trying to say. They're trying to say that the shares will be based on the area, percentage area each parcel has to the whole.
Yeah.
But it's very unclear in here.
And I guess if there's any, I would like to do a review with you. We can get our list of questions together and I can go back to Chris Patterson and say, hey, we have, we have, the planning commission and the department have this list that we'd like to be addressed. And they, they can provide us feedback. And that's typical of, whenever they send us language, they're lawyers. We, we often need clarification on that language.
Gentlemen, since Mr. Kessler's here and he initiated this ordinance request, I'd like to have him participate. Nobody has any objections? Can I, anybody have an objection?
Not at all.
To open the meeting so he can participate? Okay, thank you. Mr. Kessler, you initiated this ordinance request to facilitate.
If you could stand up here so that you could be recorded, please.
If you don't mind, I, I know it's a long day for you.
Yeah, that's for sure.
To facilitate, um, a lower cost development.
Well, what we've got is, uh, Offend Drive and Gary Lane. We've got that thirty-eight acres in there.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, uh, when we bought that, Charlie Crock and myself bought it from his folks.
Yeah.
We have invested, uh, a ton of money into it. And the idea was, we were gonna put a hundred and eighteen homes there.
Wow.
Approved, coming through this body and the planner, the whole nine yards, had it all drawn. Even purchased property, as far as the stormwater drainage, you have some extra land. I purchased, uh, an easement to get to the ditch, uh, which is over towards Hawk Hollow. And then the Road Commission come in and this is after we cut the deal with Bath. We would turn around and swap a piece of ground with Bath Township, build a soccer field, which we did. And we took the other land, of course, we did all that work to do it. Board Water and Light was running, wanted to get the water from Hawk Hollow up on the Park Lake, uh, road. And they actually brought it through this property to our layout from the engineers. Fred White was the engineer on that. And then the Road Commission all of a sudden popped up and says, well, we're only gonna let you build forty homes. What's your reasoning? Only had one entrance. Well, there's really two off Gary Lane. And now we're getting back to the Anne Drive. Anne Drive has, and homes coming up to this property and there's a home clear on the south side that has an easement across this ground. Doesn't state where, but to get to it. And of course, that home has since deteriorated, but the lot is still there. The home is still there. And, uh, that's where the power comes up through. Well, it's been twenty years, longer than that now. And, you know, we gotta do something with it. We got a half million dollars in this damn thing. And we're looking, how are we gonna rectify, at least get some dollars back out of it? So we turned around and, uh, the township's in a little pickle because, uh, they have their soccer field, but they have no way of parking, because we own all the ground around it. The drive coming in was actually on the road, it was constructed that way to follow our drawings when we were gonna build, uh, a hundred and eighteen homes on it. And that's why when you come in to go to the soccer field, it curves right on where our drive was going to be. So we came back and, uh, we addressed that. It still was gonna build the homes at the time. And there, that's when, uh, the Road Commission said, if we would take that private drive off Anne Drive, and it's still called Anne Drive, that cuts up to this property, and build that just county specs. Well, every time we turned around, the dollars got, uh, so enormous. I mean, it was, there was no upside to it. So I looked at it and I said, how can we at least recoup part of our dollars? One is coming off Gary Lane. I was willing to give the township quite a chunk of ground for the soccer field, parking, et cetera. Coming in that direction, we were going to have, I believe it was four lots, it might have been five. And that's, all of a sudden, now we got a private drive, private road coming in. And that also has to service, uh, the soccer field. It's the same road there. But then if you go further west, there's already some homes on a private drive or road coming up that actually goes through this property all the way up to the south and services that last house that was there. And I said, let us split this up. Let us, uh, some five acre parcels, four acre parcels, et cetera, and have two entrances. One off Gary Lane, one coming off of Anne Drive up through there. Let us sell these lots. You could have some people who wanted to have a pole barn, even have a horse, whatever. Now, we're not gonna give them away. I don't wanna lead you astray. We're gonna charge for it. The land that I give the township for the soccer field, that is, that was actually one of our better areas, cause it had more than water and light water going through it. And we're gonna give up a bunch of lots if, if indeed we were to try and do, say, thirty lots. They would be the prime lots, because they'd all be serviced by water and we'd get to the sewer there. So I would be, I don't mind giving it to the township, but I'm gonna want it as a donation. In other words, I get a tax write-off, let's be serious. I mean, that's what that would be about.
Right.
But it also allows us to sell, I think it's seven parcels on that thirty-five acres. Seven or eight parcels. And that's why this private road comes into play. There, and I don't understand how you could turn around and have this, the way that it's wrote. And I haven't read it, just from listening. You've already got like eight homes on that private drive, which is Anne Drive, coming up through there. Now, you can't go to them people and say, hey, you gotta turn around now and sign an ordinance. Who's gonna maintain that drive up through there? It's my understanding, evidently, they've got along fairly well.
Beyond the newer established part of the drive, they, they wouldn't need to buy into this maintenance agreement.
You said they wouldn't.
They wouldn't.
Well, I don't know how you could even ask them to.
It'd be the, whatever new parcels get divided out along this, that, they would have to sign in.
Well, there's already, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. There's already five additional ones gonna come off it that are already private pieces of ground. So technically, they don't have to either. I mean, this can be done pretty simple. Or we can make it as complicated that it'll never happen. But we would like an answer. And we'd like it pretty simple. Sure, we would, uh, go in there and we'd build a, a gravel road up through there. It'd probably end up being ash, uh, crushed asphalt or crushed concrete. And it would be ditched. And it would be pretty simple. I'd probably upgrade the road and drive as it comes up there. But if this turns into where I have to build a county road or one like it, that ain't gonna happen. I mean, we're right back to that, no upside to it.
Yeah, I think, so, uh, two things, if I may. One, we've tried to create a tier system, so like this one coming off Gary Lane, you'd be in the. One, we've tried to create a tier system. So like this one coming off Gary Lane, you'd be in the small drive category, the small road, private road category. So, the standards should be lesser. Now, this one, depending on how many new parcels were broken out, could get into the large drive category, large road, private road category. But even then, we feel like our standards aren't to the level of the county public road standards. And it, it was even in question tonight if we should require asphalt or not. That's a conversation for the planning commission to have and give us direction. I'd also say, Mr. Kessler, we have every faith that you would do right by the township. The problem that staff has for this is, it, when we write this ordinance, it's not, we understand what you wanna do here. And personally, I mean, I would like to see that too, because we are in a housing crisis. I'm trying to build a housing stock. But you're, you're gonna take advantage of this language, just like every other potential developer might. And we don't have as much faith in them, that they would do the right thing for the township. And that's why we can't just write the ordinance to one developer. That, all the respect in the world for you, sir, and we know you're doing-
That's fine.
We gotta write it for all these developers that we might not have all the respect in the world for. And that, that's the bind, I guess, I'm in.
That's the bind we're all in.
Yeah.
That's how we got in this private road thing to begin with.
Well, I know when I was on the ZBA board for a long time.
Yes, you were.
And I would always hear the planner, what is allowed, what isn't allowed. And you go back and look and Paul Shaheen, and we would kinda, and we granted a lot of things that the planner says we are not allowed to. Township attorney says we're not allowed to. But I'll line up them attorneys over there and I'll ask that question. Half of them will say, we gotta follow the ordinance. The other half says, the ZBA can do anything they wanna do. They can also get in trouble. And we did grant a lot of things, especially down around Park Lake.
Yep.
And this is something simple enough to take to the ZBA and ask the question. And forego all of, per se, these legal analysis of what this road would be and not be. But, you know, I've treated the township pretty good over the years. And I don't wanna all of a sudden be an advocate and say, hey, then, tell everybody they can't park it to soccer field anymore. Then they'll shoot me as I drive down the road.
They might.
But, you know, it can be done pretty simple. And that's what I'm looking for. It's just like I'm saying, the road commission, I was looking, it wasn't mentioned, if this project that we discussed earlier, the road commission, let's get rid of that dip soon as you go by. And let's fill in some of the east side of the road, because they're gonna wanna put a sidewalk through there. And the road commission finally agreed. And now Mark is looking at it. I said, if this project goes, I'm gonna be moving a lot of dirt. Let's fill that damn thing in. And I'd be willing to do it at no cost to the township. It would go as a donation, but the township pays nothing. And the same with the road commission. He really didn't want to, to start out.
I know he didn't.
But, because it's more work for him. He's gotta redo paperwork. But now is the time. Here's a chance for them to get a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars worth of work for free.
Yep, that's right.
Because I'm gonna be moving the dirt and I'm willing to take it and put it there. And then compact it in place.
Are you talking about the, the, the wetland there, where you wanna put the sidewalk, right alongside?
Oh, we'll fill that in on the east side, which the road commission can get permission to do that fairly quick.
Really? I thought that was like for drainage from Somerset.
No, 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 don't, don't look at this. He's talking about just the dip in the road.
Okay, you're talking about the west.
Well, no, that's filled. The road commission can fill this piece right in here.
Yeah.
You're already draining this, isn't it?
Yeah.
And they can get permission to fill it, safety-wise, because they have to give room for that sidewalk.
Sure.
Yep.
You'd have to have a retaining wall or something.
Take the dip out of the road right here.
Well, pardon me. They could fill it over an extra thirty feet.
Yeah.
And you're getting the fill for free. And Mark is looking at it. And there's a good chance, with you approving the site plan, doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but it reaches a step forward because that would have to happen in the spring. Because I'm definitely gonna fill this. This is gonna get filled.
Yeah.
This now, the hill will come off. We will fill this ground back there. And there's where that sewer goes through.
Right.
And that does say, the sewer authority, they jumped when I turned around and offered to let them come across there. Everybody but the engineer, because he had to redo it.
You gotta move a lot, you gotta move a lot of dirt to put that building down twelve feet or thirteen feet, yeah.
Absolutely.
A lot of earth balance.
But I could sell it too.
Oh, sure.
Because it's sand.
It's good, I was gonna say, it's good, good fill too.
I'm gonna run out of time, so I'm trying to get back.
Okay, I'll, I'll shut.
No, I just wanna get back to the private road thing.
Yeah.
All right. I think where we're at on the private road is we would appreciate a meeting with you gentlemen, and I think we got some work to do.
Yeah, I think-
We'll, we'll try to clean up, we'll try to simplify it.
I, I think we're trying to over complicate this a lot.
Okay. So, do you think you'll be able to have something back by next meeting? I hope so. I'll try to get a meeting with you gentlemen later this week. Yep, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell.
All right.
All right, Lexi, you wanna go ahead with your presentation?
That's okay. Okay. The purpose of this ordinance and this presentation for tonight is just to get your general feel on how you guys want to write it, how you would like me to keep up. I'm gonna depend you guys are gonna wield on this. So, whatever advice you guys can give, or whatever you're looking for, if you go through the presentation, please let me know. So, for the agenda tonight, for this presentation in particular, we're gonna go through the legality of, the legal means we have for this particular ordinance, why, and the considerations for the implementation of the ordinance, scope, what land usage would benefit. There's different types of ordinances we could do. There is like six different types of tree removal, tree mitigation, environmental consciousness, ordinance that we could go for. And I just wanna know what, what you're looking for. There's different types of permits we can do and who has the approval authority. And then there's a couple of actual things to consider. So first, we're gonna go with legal. It's just the act, if you guys wanna look into it later, that allows this ordinance to be created. And basically, in guidance of both of these acts, we can create a clear-cutting tree mitigation ordinance. So first, why consider this ordinance? I was told that you guys are looking for the aesthetic and quality of life. You guys don't want a huge giant field clear-cutted by a commercial business. And then that just destroys what, you know, Bath Township means. And it's still a community that cares about the environment. And then environmental protection. You also don't want that because it's aesthetically displeasing, changed quality of life, and then you kinda kill the environment. And this is a really wet place, so getting rid of lots of, you know, shrubbery environment, environmental causes like trees and stuff will hurt bad. So, who's included in our enforcement? It'll be a land use by type, public only, zoning district, combination, commercial, other. What are you guys looking for out of these six? Who would be included in this enforcement? Or would you want to be? And if you don't have an answer now, of course, you can email Miles for me.
I would think everybody. I heard all of the, all six of those would be included.
I would say now, public. I don't want, I don't want you to tell me I can't cut down my tree.
Yeah, that was one of the points that we've talked about in the past, is having it as a commercial only. These are the regulatory means on how to write this ordinance. So you can write an ordinance based upon, only these land uses will be subject to this ordinance. Or you could say, only commercial land use types will be subject. Or you could say, only within these districts does this ordinance apply. Or you could overlay those. So, I guess we're looking for some general direction on how you would like this to be administrated or organized. That way, we don't run into what we're doing with private drives right now, where we're about to reorganize the layout of the ordinance.
Yeah. When I, when I saw public only, I thought that meant public land.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't think it meant private land.
Oh, true.
That could, and that's another way to do it.
That's a good point. The problem I have with this, just right off the bat, is, you know, in twenty years, you can see a property that's nothing but a field. And there's a lot of farmers right now, that, within the last twenty years, that haven't farmed. And now their fields are all trees. But there were farms before that. And now I can't go in and cut it and farm it? That's a, that's, that's a struggle for me.
Anything ag-related, we would be preempted by the, we have no zoning control over agricultural uses. So that, I guess that would be a non-issue.
That's that right to farm.
Yep, right, right to farm act.
The realtor's brought this up a long time, several years ago. My concern was, is people coming in and clear-cutting land. A good example, I guess, is Intuit Township, just by Ides place up there. They clear-cut that entire thing. Nothing happened since-
Clark in twenty-
Now it's all eroded. Now they're talking about that.
Yeah.
They put a cover crop on it.
So, that's what I wanna control, is that you got a vacant piece of parcel. We're not gonna say you can't cut your trees down, but you can't come in and just clear-cut everything without giving you a plan first, what you're gonna do, and you gotta implement it.
Yeah.
I got, I got an example, which I don't think we go this far, but Ray knows what I'm talking about. Right at the corner of Hawk Hollow Drive and Senior Court, there were two great trees right on the corner.
Right on the corner, they pulled my roots.
They, they, they're building a home there now. Where they built the home, they could have left those two trees. Would've been great. But they didn't.
And that could have been the homeowner that wanted them out of there.
It could be, yeah. I don't, I don't think we'll control that. But it'd be, be nice to say when somebody's coming in for a thing like that, it says, haven't at least talked to us. What's your idea about saving as many trees as you can on this line and still be able to use it the way you wanna use it? I mean, when we built where we are, it was a totally wooded lot. And there's a lot of trees gone. They had to, because it had a lot of fill. But there are trees there that could have been saved probably, but they were, what I told the developer, they're junk trees. But we saved a big maple tree and a big oak tree and stuff like that.
And then somebody's gotta do the maintenance to clean them up, and that's why they don't want them.
Well, you see the piles of leaves out there on Club Course Drive right now.
So, I guess, are we thinking commercial land uses? That's the way that we break, to regulate these? Because we gotta get to the permit side of this too. Because the way to regulate it, once you've determined what you wanna regulate, then how do you regulate? So, when you add the how, it's through permits. So who is the permitting body? Is it administratively? Is it the planning commission? Is it a part of the board's approval? What's special use permits?
Land use by type, what would the types be? Can you, can we say?
Well, yeah, so the types would be like, anything that requires a special use permit. Anything that's by right can be clear-cut. But if it's a special use permit land type, now they have to come into this body. Or they have to go to the township clerk for a permit.
So, wouldn't we wanna use it in the combination of commercial and special use?
You could, you could overlay these.
That sounds the most logical.
I think it should be commercial development, because once the commercial parcel develops, we have a site plan and we have a landscaping plan.
So you're thinking commercial development, even if it's by right as well as a special use permit?
If it's a special use permit, yes.
Well, what, well, what he was saying was, he was saying overlaying the two. So, it has to be a commercial development and special use permit. You're saying just all commercial developments.
Well, I think anything that, because, well, a site plan only includes a landscaping plan, right? I mean, it mandates a landscaping plan.
Yep. But a commercial development has to have a landscaping plan, whether it's by right or by special use permit.
Right. And then we expect the developer, though, to maintain the landscaping plan. Is that not correct?
Yeah, we do. But the, the issue here isn't the, the maintenance of the landscape, the issue is clear-cutting. So like Ace Hardware, that was actually a by-right use on Saginaw Highway.
Correct, it was.
And they clear-cut that whole parcel well before they came in for the zoning, because they knew their intent there. And they were like, well, we don't have a building permit, but we're gonna go in and start clear-cutting.
Yes. But I don't, I don't know that you can, how are you gonna avoid that?
You would avoid it through a permit. So like if they went to go clear-cut without having a permit by, and there's, again, there's a number of bodies that can permit here. If they failed to grant a permit, then we would enact stiff fines on them for clear-cutting with no permit.
And would they have to have a plan at the time of the permit?
Well, the permit, that, the permitting process would have to be built out. But I guess our first question is, is who do we wanna enforce here? What's, what's the answer to that one first and give us some direction? Do we want it to be commercial, commercial and special use? All commercial, land use type, what is this body feel? None of the above is an option?
Have you looked at other, like?
Yeah, we did, we did. And that's what led us to these series of options. It, it is vast in how people administrate this. These are the general concepts of how people do it though.
I'd just be curious to see what other municipalities have done.
Some go by land use type, some go by commercial.
As we continue the presentation, there's, I'll give you some options on the different types. And I can let you know, like, which municipality I like picked which option from, if that makes sense.
So for us, what's, what's left in our community that's still standing? I mean, there's probably a significant amount of property.
This community's got room to develop.
So, so we wanna do commercial and, and probably SUPs for sure, right?
Yeah, you could also do, if you do that though, you exclude by rights. Like Ace Hardware would have been able to clear-cut.
Right. So how do you control that?
You say just commercial. Any, any commercial has to come in.
Okay.
Now, what we're doing, what we're doing, and we had a proposal, not official, but to put in a huge subdivision to the north up here somewhere, I mean, they-
That'd be commercial.
Okay.
Yep.
Because what, what would wanna have happen is, okay, I wanna put this fifty lot subdivision in. And the guy can click us the whole thing.
Yep.
We don't want it to happen.
A planned unit development is a use allowed by special use permit in two districts within the township. But it is a commercial use.
So, commercial use would be a dentist office or something like that also?
Correct, yeah. Anything where there's some exchange of money, or developers trying to sell off properties in form of residential, commercial.
And that's what you're looking to try to keep from happening, correct, right?
Yes.
All right. So I think the consensus right now is we're moving towards just commercial. All right, you want to continue?
And SUPs, correct, or no? Or do we already have control of that?
No, SUPs would exclude by right. So do you wanna do just commercial or commercial and SUP?
Well, if you do commercial, that would include-
It would include SUP, but if you specify just SUP, then the by-right ones would be able to clear-
No, commercial like you described. Sorry.
You're good.
Sorry, I'm taking notes.
Yeah, do your thing.
Okay. Now we're gonna go over the types of ordinances we could do for this. So, it already sounds like this is the one we're going toward. This is more of like what East Lansing does. This is like an East Lansing type. I know it's East Lansing, not Bath, but it's a similar ordinance. The permit ordinance, basically, in summary, would just come to you. They'd have to come to the commission and present their plans as like, you know, Project Forge is doing. And then whoever is submitting the permit or is like the ruling body over it, would look at all the plans and say yes or no. That is what East Lansing does. So it's by case-by-case basis. So every commercial building that is looking to clear-cut has to come to Miles or the commission or whoever we deem first, and then get the permit approved, so they can do anything. The only thing with this permit, the negative side, and why not every municipality does this, is because it's not as environmentally protective. As we continue, I'll show you the next type of ordinance, which is like very environmentally focused, where this is more dependent on the needs and wants of you guys. You guys will have the authority. So that's the first option. The second option is something that's more environmentally focused. This is more what Ann Arbor does and DeWitt. This is like what they're more focused on. It's incredibly specific. They go through like specific types of trees, invasive species that are affecting their township or municipality or city. And then they go through each of them. But it's all about like woodland restoration. The purpose of the ordinance is to create like an environmental protection, not necessarily just prohibiting a commercial business from clear-cutting. So this one would have to take lots of more time. And you would need an arborist or someone who would go out and do the things for the trees. But that could be paid for if we combined it with a permit. So if we combine it with a permit, and then a part of your, your clear-cutting process would be, somebody has to go out there with you. And then you would have a fee. and then you would have a fee along with that. And that is something more like DeWitt and Ann Arbor do in order to protect some of their species, because they want these specific trees not unrooted. So it depends on what you guys are thinking in regards to these two types.
You're looking for information, you're looking for information.
Yes, so I can start like getting together more ideas for you guys. It will help if it's more permit focused, it'll be very specific and very quick. It'll be a much, much shorter ordinance. Environmentally focused will take a lot more time consideration, but it is for the environment.
We'd also probably have to bring somebody on to help us write this ordinance, cause.
If you wanna environmentally focus it, or just to write the ordinance period?
If we want it by environmentally, if we could write a permit based ordinance, that's within our skill set, but I'm not, you know, an environmental expert.
Did you look into what Meridian Township has, I can't tell you, they've got something, but I don't know what it is.
Meridian Township only has permit. Meridian Township is permit, believe me. I could be mixing them up, don't quote me on it, but.
This, this originally started due to, due to, due to a board member not wanting to clear cut a, a, a thing. So, we, if we did the permit only, that would address that issue.
It would, we feel.
The environmentally focused ordinance, that would?
Both would address it, but I, my worry with the environmentally focused one, I guess, and Lexi has it here in her PowerPoint as of, uh, point four, is we're a small township. I mean, every, every ask of staff is an additional ask for an already. And obviously, we can bring on arborists, obviously, we can help pay for those fees, but regardless, there's gonna be some level of administrative cost to staff time, even if it's just taking the phone calls to organize the process every time.
And just the time to run the process through too.
Yeah, cause you have to then notify the arborist that their services are needed. I mean, that's a five minute email, but it adds up.
Well, I guess, in response to that, I, I wouldn't wanna write an ordinance just to save money. You know, I don't wanna dummy down an ordinance, where that could save more.
But are, are we doing ordinance for the environment, or are we doing ordinance just to keep from clear cutting?
Well, if we don't have an environment, we don't have life. Yeah, but I, I guess, and John, we talked about this. My worry is, I also don't wanna write an ordinance that sits on a shelf, I want us to be able to use the ordinance. So that's, that's my worry.
Me too. Well, I'm not, I'm not against development by any means, I think, but we need to balance development with, you know.
Environment.
Exactly.
Well, and the permitting ordinance again, I mean, if we go the route of the planning commission having some say in who gets a clear cutting permit, I mean, you'll have the authority to determine like, no, this isn't good, like you need to save some more trees on the site, that will be within your scope.
Well, there's a lot of trees, in my opinion, aren't worth saving. But, and I've got a lot of timber, and to me, it's just a slow growing crop, and I've told some of the other commissioners.
They're terrible.
I mean, it is.
So, can we put that in our orders, we have to kill, we have to cut down any cottonwood we saw, we see anywhere?
So we're, just for feedback for us, so we're looking, we're good with a permit ordinance?
I would say permit's fine.
Yeah.
That sounds.
If we're going permit, permit.
Yep, let's go with permit, Lexi.
We're gonna go with permit specific. There's three types of bodies that other municipalities in the state of Michigan, I didn't look at any other thing outside of Michigan, but the state of Michigan are approved by. Some of them only go to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator does all of this work, or like the rights and requirements, it goes to them. And they approve off and sign off it, and it's only under the zoning administrator. And that is done with some of the smaller municipalities that don't have the capacity. A lot of them, though, are done with the planning commission, which is you guys. It would start with you guys and also end with all of you, with you guys going through site plans yourself and approving them. But that does take lots of time on your part and consideration with how many developments would come into that, but you would know more than I do, so. And then lots of the bigger municipalities use the board of trustees. So you guys would still approve the plans here at the commission, but then the board of trustees would have the overall ruling. And that was done more for the fees and fines portion of it. That was like what they're, the consideration of the board of trustees worth. So there's some ordinances that have a really, really heavy fine fees section, a part of their permits. There's other ordinances that are at the discretion of the municipality, and those normally go to the zoning administrator to decide.
If I could speak real quick, uh, the option that I kinda like here, is you guys already are experienced in the site plan review phase, it's already coming to you anyways, it's an appropriate time to do it. Um, I do like the idea of having fees, cause I like, the carrots are great, but sticks great too. Uh, but I feel like that, that arm of it probably should be ran out to go to the board of trustees. So like if a big fee is levied against somebody, the board has some ability to be a part of that process. So general site plan review and permitting, planning commission, any administration of fees goes to the board, that, that's what we were thinking.
I would agree with that. If I had to write or write an ordinance.
So is your thought to tie the fee to the scope of the parcel?
The fee would, the permitting fee will be something that will just be every time. So we'll come up with a fee structure that will be added to the fee schedule for the permit itself. And it'll probably go off of, uh, s- you know, acreage or, uh, squ- amount of timber removed or something like that. But it would be a quantifiable amount that'll be standard every time.
So it won't be a flat fee?
It won't be a flat fee, it'll be scalable. Now, the fee that, I guess the other fee I was talking about is for people that violate the ordinance. So Ace Hardware goes and clear cuts without permit, that goes to the board, because now we're about to levy a massive fee against them.
Well, is the fee just a punitive?
It's only.
Charge, or is it gonna be utilized to replant trees on the site?
Well, and that's something we would, so that's something that we'd speak to. Yeah, but that, that is something that most people do. Usually whenever you have a fee of any type, and we just sat in on a class or a day, um, about what you're legally allowed to do when administering fees, it's always the best legal foundation to tie those fees to s- the use of the process itself. So that would be a great way to do it.
Okay, so I'm hearing, planning commission goes to decide plan, but then having fees that are levied against going to the board trustees.
Yeah, I, I think it's gotta be tied to the scope of the project too.
I think that's a scalable.
A lot for a single family home can be treated a lot differently than a ten acre parcel for a development. Or a forty acre parcel.
Okay, and then the last part of this, is there some extra things to consider? Some of the municipalities, if they do go permit based, since it is a smaller ordinance, it won't take up that much time. If you guys are gonna review all of them, right, so that'll be quick to say in the ordinance. They combine it with some grading regulations, if that's what you guys are looking to do. If you're not, completely ignore it, but that is something that they do consider in some of the smaller municipalities by combining these ordinances together. Another thing is water. Bath is really wet and clear cutting may include water features. And if that's something you guys are looking to add, but those are more normally catered towards the environmental ordinances. So like DeWitt has some stuff about like their water system, but you don't necessarily have to do that if you're approving every single site plan, right? So if there's a giant river and they're trying to clear cut and there's this huge river, you guys would look at that first anyway. And then, is the community, is this something that you believe the community needs? But that would be more catered towards a public, if that was for everybody, but if we're gonna go for commercial, do your commercial properties want this, or would this affect people building in Bath?
Now, when you talk about grading, because just our site plan, we, we require a grading plan anyway. The, the, the biggest problem with grading is not for a commercial site, in my opinion. It's for subdivisions, especially if subdivision's not being built out by one developer quickly. Because you, you, you build a house this year, three years later, you build the one next to it. The first guy has regraded his property, it's, the, the site plan comes in with a grading plan for the entire thing. How you enforce that, I don't know, but it causes all kinds of drainage problems if it doesn't get enforced.
So we could also not add that, we could just leave that completely ambiguous, doesn't even matter, but just wanna bring the option to the planning commission. But those are things to consider, we can decide on those later. But as long as we have, we're doing commercial only, or do permit only, or do planning commission, then send to board trustees, this is a major free. Do we have any contention with any of those three before we move on and I start writing this ordinance?
The other thing, it doesn't, it, it doesn't go in this ordinance, but, you know, I've been saying for a long time, we need to have something that requires street trees. Why does it go in this ordinance?
We have, we do have some language in our landscaping ordinance that speaks to that. I wish it was written a little bit differently, if that was just prior to my time here.
Because it makes a big, it makes a big difference in how you drive, especially when the, when the street's fifteen years old, fifteen years long. If you've got street trees, it doesn't. You drive down a street with no street trees, and you drive down the same street with street trees, entirely different atmosphere.
Hundred percent agree.
But if we do, if we do something with that, we've gotta have some kind of thing of what kind of trees you can put in for street trees. There are street trees on alcohol drive that are not street trees. They were put in a long time ago, but they're not street trees.
I struggle with the board of trustees piece. I worry that once things get to the board, they become inherently political, and the issuance of fees should not be political. So, there could be a pathway where I could see this, but it's hard for me to wrestle with like, what information would a board decide you get a fine and you don't get a fine, without that getting yucky real quick?
I think that's reasonable.
Like where we have administrators do it, there's still opportunity for, you know, this and not that, but I think there's less leeway and less pressure from the public to say, you should let them off the hook, or, you know, that's my neighbor and.
It can lead to less bias in decision making.
Yeah, I think it's easier for a court to be like, alright, Miles, you did A here and B here in the similar situation, that's not fair. But if the ordinance itself says the board gets to pick and choose, then the board picks and chooses.
Yeah, and if we leave it up to the administrator, which I'm fine with, we would build in, um, objective standards. How that would, you know, it wouldn't be, really, the administrator would just look at the spreadsheet and say, uh, this is what your fee is.
That's why you pull it right there.
I agree.
So for levied fees, administrator?
Yeah, I, I think it makes it less political and there's less, you know, oh, it's an election year, so I'm not gonna let me fine, you know what I mean?
A hundred percent.
Well, there should be a.
Not that anyone would ever do that, but it provides the opportunity for.
No, it does. We appreciate that feedback, I mean, that's what we're looking for.
There should be a fixed fee schedule based on parcel size and the number of trees over a certain rest type.
Okay, so we'll have one set, one set of fees for the permit and one set of fees for violations. Both on the fee schedule and not subject to. Yeah, and not subject to any kind of ad hoc decision.
No, absolutely.
Okay, that's great feedback, guys.
And that's all I had for you guys, thank you. Turn it over to Miles.
No public comment?
No, no public comments, no public hearing. Any commissioner, uh, Miles, anything else from your department?
Yeah, we do, if, if, uh, we have something real quick for a report from planner, I'll quickly go over, cause I know it's been a long meeting. Before I go into it real quick here, um, I do need to get some dates. Lockdown with you guys, uh, administration has asked me to bring this up tonight. Just cause I, I think we know what we're gonna do here, but we just need to make it official, if that's okay, Chair? I, I guess, first off, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that, uh, you know, our next meeting is the twenty eighth, we had Thanksgiving the week prior. Uh, I'm planning on still having a packet for you guys, it's gonna be a light packet. So I, we had a long meeting tonight, so hopefully next time we'll have a lighter meeting. Uh, but just anticipate a light packet for me.
Could that be a good meeting to talk about the, uh, parcels that we were gonna examine?
That'd be, that'd be good.
That way you wouldn't even need a packet, cause Ray would do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Is that okay with you?
The only item we'd be looking to bring back would be the private roads.
Right, if that, if that's an issue, and you, that would be a pretty simple thing.
Yeah, and that's, it's gonna be a, a really simple packet, one page agenda, minutes, and then that, and then, um.
And I did send all of you, uh, a document, actually during the meeting, I sent it to you all about that, you should read that over, it should be in your email.
Okay, okay.
Great. And if there's any questions on it, just give me a call.
Will that help on my?
That sounds great. Um, and then December twenty sixth, where we are supposed to have a meeting, and are we, can I get, um?
No, no, cancel.
Okay.
Unless there's objections.
Yeah, can we get it up?
Does anybody object to canceling the meeting for the twenty sixth? Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great.
I make the motion to cancel December twenty sixth meeting.
Okay, there's been a motion on the second. Uh, can I get a consensus vote, those in favor say yes? Any opposed? None opposed?
Okay, great, we, I figured that was the case, but we just, we gotta get cleaned up so we can put it on the board's calendar, or the township's calendar.
We wanna play with our toys we got on Christmas.
Okay, so if it, i- if I can, real quick, I'll just quickly roll through this. Uh, this is a policymaking body, and I think it's great for you guys to have full information. Uh, the US Census released some twenty twenty one data. Uh, we quickly put something together to just say where the township's at. In terms of population, our spread in the township's actually quite healthy. So in blue on all of these graphs is Bath Township, and, um, this orange color is the US overall. This is the spread you're looking for, this kind of arc here, that's a healthy population spread. We get a little bit of bump in the, uh, college category just because of our proximity to, uh, Michigan State.
Sorry.
It's you. Population by race and Hispanic origin, obviously Bath Township is, uh, quite a, a white township, it's very white. That has been, i- if I showed something over time, I mean, our numbers have been going up in the other categories over the years, so there is some movement there. Educational attainment, we do quite well on this, uh, category as well, it's a very educated township. So, uh, make of that what you will, but, you know, most planners would say overall, that's a good thing. It's something that just has been contentious about this, uh, from the planning industry in recent years is, you know, it puts a preference on college education and doesn't necessarily put a preference on the trades. And, eh, you know, it's, it's hard to quantify that, I wish the US Census did a better job of quantifying that. But nonetheless, I mean, I think, eh, really good on the township, education wise, in both trades and college educated. Uh, US households, a lot of families in the township, uh, good amount of married with children, good amount of married without children. So very healthy in the family structure of the township, we stack up good, eh, compared to other areas of the country. Uh, housing type, we have a lot of, uh, one unit attached or detached, so the single family homes. And we have a lot of owner occupied as well, we do, uh, similar to the US, but higher in the owner occupied, and that's good. You want a community where, there are problems that typically get associated with large amounts of renting structures. Uh, Detroit, for example, has a large amount of properties that are owned that are rented out. They kinda got decimated in the last recession for their owner occupied, I mean, it fell off the cliff. Commute to work, unsurprisingly, we've got a lot of drivers. So, you know, you know, um, a higher, we're actually higher on the driving category than the US average. So, that's something we do have some room to work on in the township. I think just by our semi rule of nature, it's just, it's gonna be a heavy lift to change that over time. Um, occupations, um, this is always just because of how the US Census breaks this down. And I wouldn't read into this too much, but, um, I, I really can't even draw anything from that, so. That's it, that is quick on where we kinda stack up. If you wanna dive deeper into those numbers, they're in your packet, give it a look, there is some interesting stuff in there, I didn't wanna go into too much detail, it's been a long night.
Could you provide that information to the board of trustees too?
Yeah, you want me, I can send this presentation to Karen to provide to the board.
Yeah, either in the packet or even in the, um, mailboxes? I just think it's helpful as.
In the mailbox, I can do that.
We make policy to know that this is what we're looking at.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys, cause, um, I think it's useful.
Thank you. Anything for us, Brian?
Yeah, nothing's been happening lately at the board level. Uh, we have been continuing our work on the budget. Uh, we have been continuing our work on the budget, uh, usually at the five o'clock hour between five and six prior to a a regular scheduled meeting. I think we are pretty much done with our work collectively on the budget. We've scheduled the public hearing for November twentieth. And then hopefully a vote on December fourth. That would allow folks to give us feedback on the twentieth, us to bake that in if we'd like to in a final budget. And still meet the deadline of getting it done before the end of the year. So that's how I anticipate that will uh, flow. The building and zoning budget, which, you know, touches our work uh, quite well, is proposed to be two hundred fifty eight thousand dollars. Uh, for next year in revenue. Uh, that would be a use of about seventy two thousand dollars of fund balance from the funds balance that is left over from previous years. So that's sort of like a a deficit budget that we're pulling from our savings to fund. Uh, basically, all of the funds across the township and the general fund itself are all pulling from fund balance, uh, almost to the tune of two million dollars. So we've got some revenue issues we're gonna have to address in the township very soon. Uh, the building and zoning budget will be up about eleven percent, uh, if if in the latest proposal that goes through. Uh, we filled the trustee vacancy left by uh, the death of trustee Benzi with former supervisor Jack Phillips. I know many of you know him. I think the consensus on the board, or at least my take on it, was that Jack could hit the ground running and knew. Knew what the budget process looked like and could just sort of serve the rest of uh, that year term out. Uh, so he has joined the board uh, for this remainder of the last year. We talked about Ian Drive and approved the three hundred eighteen feet of private drive asphalt. Uh, some of our colleagues presented that to the board and uh, the board did agree with that. We're going to do a sewer study rate uh, to better understand where we need to be financially in order to deal with projects like we've been talking about. And just natural growth and development and wear and tear on the sewer, as well as the um, pretty significant expansion over at Skuma. That the communities are looking to do collectively. We did some fourth quarter budget amendments, uh, nothing too uh, shocking in there. We did hear an investment report from the treasurer. We get that quarterly, so this would have been the third quarter investment report. It's been a tough year for our investments. We're down about one point two million uh, in twenty twenty three since January. It's not been a great year for the markets. That also includes some savings accounts and things that ebb and flow normally throughout the year. So I wouldn't read too much into that, but it's not the direction we want to head. So using fund balance and a decrease in investment, you can see where we're slow walking in the next several years. That we've got to either do some significant cutting or uh, some revenue generation. The board approved how we would use the remainder of our ARPA funds. Uh, and functionally, we decided to use them for, and I'm gonna do this out of memory, so forgive me if I forget something. Police shields. Sort of a hazard pay uh, for police officers who worked during COVID. Uh, hazard pay for fire department who worked during COVID. Thank you.
Lux.
Yes, the keyless entry and security system and the port in place replacement for whistwasser. And one, one outdoor emergency siren that I think we will continue to build off from it. It sounds like we could need as many as ten to twelve new sirens to cover the entire township. Um, I, it's really expensive to do that all at once, so we've agreed to do one. And sort of the the way I saw this was to use the ARPA funds for protection of our township. Whether it's fire protection, police protection, uh, you know, safety in our parks, protection of the facilities. Uh, you know, outdoor emergency protection of our um, residents. I, in my opinion, that made a lot of sense for how to use money that was allocated by the federal government to protect citizens from the pandemic. And the fallout from the pandemic, uh, and the board agreed with that. So those things will start to move as part of our budget process uh, for fiscal year twenty four. We approved a a Granger Waste Management Plan to sort of expand what they're doing over on Grand River. Uh, to start using the top of their old landfill. They've got some sort of like air that they can fill. Uh, what was fascinating to me about that process and each of the municipalities here in the in the county will have to vote on that. But uh, it's it's like a ten to fourteen year process before this would even come to fruition. So, you know, we voted in twenty twenty three, this may not even come online until, you know, twenty thirty five. Uh, so they're really thinking ahead in sort of the way we do about land use, but I thought that was fascinating that they're, I mean, they're thinking way ahead. And they have to with the way that the, you know, system works. Uh, and then many of you saw our supervisor, Marie Howe resigned. We accepted her resignation. The board appointed me to serve in the remainder of her term. Uh, and in the domino effect has then created a vacancy in my trustee position, which we will be looking to fill here, uh, hopefully next week. Uh, we're taking applications of folks who might be interested in serving the remainder of that term until tomorrow. So if folks are interested, there's a form to fill out and submit to the the township here by five o'clock. And then uh, we do have a couple of other public hearings scheduled on November twentieth. It's sort of odd, we're having three separate public hearings all in the same day, one for the budget, one for norm fasteners that we just recommended up. And then one for the IFD district to create the IFD district for norm fasteners. So all of those things will happen uh, on the twentieth. And then we've only got two more meetings until the end of the year after the twentieth, so three total. Uh, and, you know, a little bit of business to get to, and then we'll roll into next year. And as you know, next year will be an election year, so folks in the township will have until around April to decide who wants to run, what they want to run for. And and start running for um, the primary, which will be in August, and then the general in November. Feels so far away, but it will come very quickly to us. So it's helpful for people to start thinking about, you know, am I interested in in something like that? You've still got a few months to to make your considerations. And that's it.
Any questions for Ryan? Ray, you had your hand up. You wanted to make a comment?
Oh, no, that was in the commission comments.
Oh, well, go for it.
Okay, um, I just had a a thought. Miles, do you handle all the um, private residence permits also?
Uh, what, zoning permits? We handle those, yeah.
Well, the rea- the reason, I would just, you know, it's, I swear everywhere I go, they're building houses. And so I just thought it might be nice if if in your planner comments, you could just say, and we're building. This month, I've got, you know, twenty six more permits, just so we get an idea how many houses are going up.
I can, I can work on it, yeah.
No, I mean, I know, I know you've got a lot of.
That'd be another thing, you know.
No, off the top of your head right now.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, housing's been going up, but yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean, it just.
Yeah, as a part of the report from planner, once a month, I can try to speak to the residential construction going on.
And I mean, just a blur, you know, and and it's just a suggestion, that's all.
No, it's, it's fine.
Ryan, did you have any other comments?
No, thank you.
George?
Again, thank you for all your time. Obviously, this packet took a little time.
Yeah, ninety six pages.
It was a great presentation. Thank you. Great to the point, good, solid questions. And uh, what you did here, Miles, thank you.
John, can I change my mind real quick?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, I anticipate that as I have taken the supervisor's role, I probably will resign from the planning commission. Uh, just to manage my own life and time better.
I would imagine.
It is probably, you know, one of the very few downfalls I feel in in taking this new position. Uh, I like working with all of you, but we'll get you another board member. I think once, once we fill the last position, we can figure out who's on what committees again. So in case this is uh, the last time I see you in this capacity, it's been great working with you all. And my, I anticipate recommending to the full board, George to permanently sit on this committee. We, I think we all have felt that has been looming in the air for far too long, so uh, he has agreed he will stick around and we'll make him. A real boy.
Give him a term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great summaries. Do you have any comments?
Nope.
No.
Mark, nothing? Thank you, Alexis. Yeah, I think you did a great job. It's a great start anyhow.
Thank you.
One last thing, sir. We seem to have an empty chair over there.
Yes, we do. He resigned.
Okay.
And the board will be selecting somebody for that position.
I just thought maybe we might have mentioned it.
Yes, yeah, they're aware of it.
I just, no, I just found out about it when I walked in tonight.
Oh, okay, no, I'm not.
Oh, you had to read your Friday report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I did.
You missed that one. You missed it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we all miss something occasionally. Anything else, gentlemen? Well, I'm gonna.
Motion to.
Motion to.
Second.
Thank you. Do anybody object?
Thanks for that great presentation, Lexi.
Thank you. I'll get better, I promise.
Pretty pictures and everything.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What's that?
It's all right.
Until the next.